Okay, thanks. We have the preamble and hopefully that'll give folks a little bit more time. So I'm going to call this public hearing of Wednesday, December 2nd to order. Just ask councillors to, we have to maintain quorum through this quasi judicial meeting, so please make sure your video is turned on. This meeting is authorized under ministerial order M192, and we're all participating remotely. If my connection is lost, if anybody's connection is lost, because this is a public hearing, we will recess the meeting until the connection is restored. And the information for IT has just been circulated to you by the clerks. Please let the clerks know if you're leaving the meeting, just so we can maintain quorum and let us know too when you come back. Video of council members speaking, video of council members speaking, presentations and vote results will be projected to viewers when available. Members of the public can also listen to the proceedings via the live stream and YouTube link, which is tweeted out @VanCityClerk. We have speakers who will be providing comments to council by phone and a moderator will assist in patching the speakers through when their turn comes up. We have the roll call, please clerk.
Yes, Mayor Stewart in the chair, councillor Carr. Councillor Dijonova. Councillor Dijonova, are you on the line? Okay. Councillor Frye. Councillor Swanson. Councillor Hardwick.
Present.
Councillor Weeb. Councillor Weeb, are you on the line?
Yeah, I'm present.
Councillor Boyle.
I am present, and sorry, that was probably my son in the background there.
Councillor Dominado. Councillor Dominado. I was just speaking with councillor Dominado, she'll be joining us shortly. Councillor Bly. And councillor Kirby Young. Councillor Kirby Young.
I can see councillor Kirby Young.
Yes. I believe you're muted councillor Kirby Young. I will have IT contact councillor Kirby Young, but we do see her on the video. Over to you, Mayor Stewart, you do have form.
Thanks very much. Thanks clerk, and first we acknowledge we're in the unceded traditional territories of Musqueens, Gomis and Slabletooth people, and thank them for having, for the generosity to all who live and work on these lands. Want to thank the staff too, who do an awesome job, day in and day out here in the city, especially during these tough COVID times. Just in terms of how we proceed, speakers have five minutes to make their comments and should limit their comments to the merits of the report being considered. Be preferred if people would say if they're in support or oppose the recommendations, and if they are resident of Vancouver. Speakers may only speak once, and should follow along on Twitter @VanCityClerk for updates on the progress of the meeting, and I'll read the numbers, the speakers out, just to keep folks informed. Any comments on the agenda item can be submitted in writing on our online web form @vancouver.ca-public-hearingcomments, and that link is also tweeted out. So if you have any comments, please send them in through that web form. Speakers who pre-register with presentations are reminded that the public live feed has a slight 20 second delay. To navigate through the slides of your presentation, please say the word "next" and I'll accompany you through that to make that a little easier as we go. Finally, if council does not conclude hearing from all speakers this evening, we will recess and reconvene the meeting Thursday, December 10th at 6pm. Just a reminder to councillors, that our role at public hearing is to be a quasi judicial body, which is that we're only to consider the merits of the rezoning application or heritage designation. We can ask clarifying questions from speakers, including the applicant, or technical advice from staff, but we should save debate until after the speakers' lists have closed. Also, try to avoid discussions of policy unless it pertains directly to the, to the application. In the end, we can approve the application in principle, we can refuse the application, or we can defer the application for further consideration. And so we're going to start on our first item, which is the number one CD1 rezoning on 1281 Kingsway. First, before we start, I'll just ask if any councillor wishes to declare a conflict of interest on this item.
No, I guess I can go in the other room.
Just to remind staff that you're not muted, you're not muted, so it'd be great if you could mute until the start of this. So with no conflict of interest, I am going to ask the clerk to read the application and summary of correspondence received. Please go ahead, clerks.
There is an application by the Stewart Howard Architects Inc. to amend the zoning and development bylaw to rezon 1265 to 1281 Kingsway, from C2 Commercial District to CD1 Comprehensive Development District, to permit the development of a six-storey mixed-use building with 43 secured rental housing units, a height of 21 metre and a floor space ratio of 3.74 are proposed. The General Manager of Planning, Urban Design and Sustainability recommends approval, subject to the conditions set out in the summary and recommendation of the public hearing agenda. The following correspondence has been received since referral to public hearing and prior to the close of the speaker list, and we see the public comments. Two pieces of correspondence in support. This represents all correspondence received up to 4:30pm today.
Great, okay, council. Sorry, oh, I'm off mute. Okay, great. First of all, if there are any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, participant code 19667, hashtag to get on the list before the close of the speakers' list. So this number will be tweeted out, and I'll repeat it throughout the evening, and it's available on the live stream. We do have speakers of this item, council, so I will, then we'll move ahead with the presentation. We have Jim Spleen from the rezoning centre, who has, I see, 16 slides to go through. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Spleen for his presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just share my screen for you now. Thank you, Mayor. I'm the rezoning planner on this application, which proposes to rezone 1265, so 1281 on Kingsway, under the Secured Market Rental Housing Policy, also known as Rental 100. This is an application for a mid-block site on the north side of the street, between Inverness Street and Clark Drive. It's currently zoned C2, which permits mixed-use development. These sites are the north, across the lane is zoned CD1, and contains a three-story residential building. These sites directly to the east are also zoned C2, while further to the southeast, at the corner of Clark Drive, a comparable rental 100 proposal was approved in April of 2019. Directly to the west of the site, at number 1247, a rezoning application for a six-story rental 100 proposal was recently approved on September 15th, and is currently pending by law enactment. This image shows an aerial view of the site facing north. The site is approximately 1,000 square metres in size, and is currently developed with two, two-story mixed-use buildings. The width of the road in this location is approximately 100 foot. The buildings are currently occupied by commercial uses on the ground floor, with six rental units above, that are all currently leased. Five of these leases are eligible for assistance under the Tenant Relocation and Protection Policy. This area has a range of local amenities, shops and services. This area includes bus route number 19 between Metro Town and Stanley Park, and there are five elementary schools located within a kilometre of the site. The Vancouver School Board enrolment numbers indicate that enrolment vacancies currently exist at three of these schools. There are four grouped childcare, and four local parks are located within 800 metres of the site. This proposal has been assessed under the Secured Market Rental Housing Policy, also known as Rental 100. On November 26, 2019, council approved amendments to this policy and renamed it the Secured Rental Policy. As the rezoning application received a supportive response to their rezoning inquiry before this date, the proposal is being assessed under the original Secured Market Rental Housing Policy. This application proposes to rezone the site from C2 to CD1, to permit the development of a six-story building with 43 secured market rental units and commercial use at grade. The maximum height of the proposal is 21 metres, with a floor space ratio of 3.74. The unit mix includes 16 two-bedroom and two-three bedrooms, which achieves a family unit mix of 42%, exceeding the 35% required in the family room housing mixed policy. As part of Restart Smart Vancouver, in response to the pandemic, the proposal will create approximately 150 new onsite and offsite jobs during the recovery phase. Shown here is a view facing west at the proposal from the rear lane. We can see that the upper floors have been stepped back from the rear to reduce the impact on homes to the north of the site. Two townhouses have been located at the rear of the ground floor, which help to activate the laneway and to provide a sense of surveillance in the lane. The building shown on the right-hand side is the recently approved rezoning application at 1247. The proposed maximum average rents are set by the DCL bylaw, and are shown in the green column on the left-hand side. For comparison, the average market rents for newer buildings on the east side are shown in blue, along with the average household income required for each rent level. Not all apartments will be leased at the maximum allowable rate, with rents determined by the location of each project and the location of the apartments within each building. The units within this proposal will not be affordable to all households, however, the DCL waiver does enable the creation of new secured rental housing stock. The red column on the right-hand side shows the high cost of home ownership versus renting. These ownership costs are calculated with BC assessment figures, along with recent sales prices, a 10% down payment, a 5% mortgage rate over a 25-year timeframe, and monthly fees and taxes. If approved, all apartments would be secured through a housing agreement, which would prohibit the stratification and the sale of individual apartments for the life of the building. A pre-application open house was held in October of 2019, and was attended by 28 people. Following submission of the rezoning application, a virtual open house was held from June 15th to July 5th of this year. Details of the application have been made available on our website, with a staff contact provided for further information. During the three-week open house, there were 89 views of the project page, with 42 of those downloading files. There were nine engaged individuals who submitted comments or questions. In total, six online comments and four questions have been received. Key themes of support included the provision of the amenity space and a green roof, while the key themes of concern included the expected utilization of onsite car parking, and the increased impact on local amenities such as schools and parks. In reviewing the application, staff have determined that the proposed height, massing, car parking and mix of uses are an appropriate response for this site. In summary, staff recommend approval of this application to rezone the site from C2 to CD1, subject to the conditions outlined in appendix B of the report, as it meets the intent of the Rental 100 program. If approved, the application would provide 43 new secured market rental units, and contribute to the rental targets outlined within Housing Vancouver. Thank you. Staff and the applicant team are now available to answer your questions.
Thanks so much. I have here on my script that the applicant team also has a presentation, so perhaps we could proceed with that, and then move to questions from council to staff or the applicant.
Yes, thank you, your worship. Is our presentation up there? I'm afraid I can't see.
I can see on the public screen, it is with the picture of the building on the front, first slide.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Jim and staff, for your hard work and for your presentation, and thank you, your worshipful members of council, for taking the time today to review our project. Council spends a great deal of your evenings at the best of times, in public hearings and extended council meetings. But given the current state of the world, it's especially worthy of thanks, so thank you. My name's Neil Robertson, I'm the project architect for this project. We've been working quite hard with city staff and our client on this project for two years now. We're quite pleased with how this building is shaping out, both from an architectural standpoint, as well as an urban interface standpoint. Now, staff have done an excellent job describing our project, and I apologize for any overlap with our presentation. I'll do my best to skip over duplicate information in my presentation. Slide please. As Jim mentioned, the current zone for this lot is C2, and is located at the corner of Clark Drive and Kingsway, one block west of Knight Street. The site is well-served by transit of both Kingsway and Knight Street. It is under a 10-minute walk from two elementary schools, and approximately a five-minute drive from two secondary schools. As Jim mentioned, there are several parks in close proximity, including Trout Lake, which is only a few minutes' drive away. Slide please. The lot immediately west of us was recently rezoned by council to a similar height and density and usage to what you see before you tonight. The two lots west of that are both four-story mixed-use developments under the existing C2 zone, but although they are slightly smaller, they have a very similar use to what we are proposing tonight. Slide please. Parking and loading is proposed off the lane to the north. We are proposing to provide significant stepping of massing in the north side, primarily to address shading concerns to lots across the lane, but also to provide some excellent roof deck areas for the residents with excellent views to the city. Slide please. It was important for us, in the design of this building, that it had a tripartite expression, with a clear base, middle and top, each expressing the use of the occupants. Further to that, we utilized the residential framing elements from the mid-levels down on the ground level to visually connect it and delineate the residential entry from the adjacent commercial spaces. So you can see that on the left side there, how the line carries down from the residential. Slide please. We then further pulled the commercial facade away from the street to create added separation from Kingsway, while also creating the opportunity for commercial at-grade exterior seating opportunities. So you can see on the top left there, how we sucked the commercial portion back from the rest of the facade. I've got a slide further on where we demonstrate how we've created those at-grade patios. On the lane side of the project, we were able to reclaim and activate the lane through the introduction of two at-grade bi-level townhouse units. We feel that these units will contribute to making the lane less the utility space and more of a secondary street, while also providing more family living opportunities. And you can see them in the bottom right-hand rendering there, adjacent to the parking ramp there, we have the two at-grade townhouse units there. Slide please. We are providing one and a half levels of underground bicycle and vehicular parking in excess of what's required by the parking bylaw. I'll dwell on the slide, slide please. So the left-hand floor plan there, the at-grade floor plan, and you can see how we sucked the commercial facade back, creating patio space for those units. The commercial units are double-high spaces with mezzanines in the rear. We feel that these are great flexible commercial spaces that could equally serve as restaurants or retail spaces. And on the north side there, you can see the lower level of the lane side townhouses. On the right-hand side of your screen, the upper residential spaces, you can see that we are providing large livable units with great outdoor spaces, quite a bit bigger than what's typically seen in rental projects, and that we are providing 43% family units, well in excess of what's required under this policy. Slide please. On the left-hand side of your screen, the northwest corner of the fifth level, we are providing a large amenity space with an adjacent outdoor space, which will boast excellent views of the city to the northwest. And on the right-hand side of your screen, on the roof level, we are proposing an extensive green roof system, to both reduce our mechanical storm surge load, while also providing habitat for birds and insects. Slide. Here is a quick section illustrating how we sculpted the north side of the building to address the shading concerns, as well as indicated in red there, you can see the outline of what is permitted under the existing zone. And then slide please. And then here are shadow studies proving out how the sculpting of the building has, has addressed concerns of shading to the north of the project in the north there, and how it coincides with the massing is consistent with what's been approved by council to the west of us there. Slide please. And finally, as a rezoning, we'll of course be required to meet passive house or equivalent to passive house performance. Our strategies for this include, but are not limited to, premium in-suite heat recovery ventilators, low window-to-wall ratios with high-performance glazing assemblies, high-performance wall and roof assemblies, as well as integrated rainwater management and green infrastructure, including the aforementioned green roof. I could of course speak ad nauseam about this project for you, but I think you guys have had a long few days here, so I'll stop there, but I would be happy to answer any questions that council may have regarding it.
Thanks so much for your presentation. Just give councillors a couple of seconds. There you go, councillor Swanson, up to five minutes, please go ahead. Staff or applicants.
Yeah, one question for the staff, and then some for the applicant. So is it correct that there is going to be five units of people that will be evicted, and that their rents range from 832 to 1245?
Yes, so there are five apartments on the top floor of the site, as it exists currently, and they are eligible under the TRP for the relocation program.
Okay, thanks. And then to the applicant, do you have any plans to get government funding, government financing for this, like provincial or federal?
I do not believe there's any designs on that currently. I would have to speak with my client, but to my knowledge, there's no intention to do that at this time.
Okay. And is there any way we could get you to replace the affordability of the five units that will be demolished? Even the most expensive one is less than a new studio, it looks like.
I think our client would be willing to consider some measures. I know they have excellent relationships with those tenants, they're long-term tenants for a reason. I personally can't commit to that tonight for you, councillor Swanson, but I would be more than happy to discuss that with my client.
Okay, that would be good. Will it be pet-friendly?
I believe so, yes. I know that my clients have animals themselves, so we haven't discussed that yet, but I think there's a good chance there that'd be the other way. And of course, if you guys bring in bylaws that would change that, I'm sure we would be compelled to do so.
Maybe we will. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, councillor Kirby Young. Up to five minutes.
Thank you. Hi, I have a question for the applicant, and two questions. And one relates to the setback and sidewalks, and I wonder if you can speak to sort of the sidewalk quit, in terms of accommodating the public realm on.
Yeah, so right, just follow my drawings, here's I give you the correct numbers. So currently, the sidewalk is, well, currently, under the C2 zone, staff are requesting that we provide a five-foot setback off our property line. The sidewalk right now appears to be about, I don't have the dimension on it, but I'm going to guess about 15 feet deep. And then we're pulling our commercial facade an additional five feet back. So the distance from the commercial facade to the property line is approximately 10 feet, and then with another approximate 15 feet, I'm going to guess, from our property line to the curb edge.
Okay, so it is a generous width in terms of enabling pedestrian flow?
Yeah, we feel so. Yeah, it was, that was, it was a very conscious move on our part to try to decompress against what is a relatively busy street.
Yeah, that was the context of my question, so thanks for that. My second question relates to the, I think you framed the double-height commercial space on the mezzanine.
Yes.
And I wonder if you can speak at all to the anticipated tenanting strategy?
Yeah, unfortunately, that's a little beyond my pay grade. The whole intent in speaking with our clients was to make these spaces as flexible as possible. So we really, when we started designing these spaces, we tried to make them so that they could accommodate restaurants, or some really nice commercial spaces, or even some office. They would sort of benefit from gauging the pedestrian realm there. By myself, our office has double-high space with a mezzanine. I'm somewhat not impartial to this particular layout, but I think it's quite a successful strategy.
So just a quick follow-up on that, being not impartial to it, as you put it, was that sort of a design choice, or did the building, or the rest of it lend it to that? Or was it a conscious design choice in terms of, and what were you looking for in terms of the impact to utility on the space?
Well, just a conscious design choice. You know, I think a lot of commercial spaces suffer from non-generous ceiling heights. So I really feel that by lifting the ceiling, by providing that double-high space, it makes the spaces a lot more, less compressed and much more comfortable to occupy, both for people that work there and people that visit the businesses.
Great, thank you very much.
Thanks. We don't have any other questions from councillors. I have a quick question for you, to the applicant. Just wondering when, if you have a date that you submitted this rezoning application to the city?
I do have a date. I believe we were, I'm sorry, February, yeah, February of this year.
February of this year? Okay, great.
So that was, and of course, the inquiry period prior to that.
You did a letter of inquiry beforehand?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And you know that's voluntary now?
Yes. It was not when we started this project.
I understand. Okay, great. Thank you so much for those. I don't see, council, I don't see any other questions, so we're going to go hear from the public now. The first speaker we have on the list is Craig Patterson. Is Mr. Patterson there, clerks?
Hello.
Hi there. You have up to five minutes. Whenever you're ready, please go ahead.
Thank you. I'm 74, and I've lived in the area for 30 years. I'm a block and a half away from this development. I should, I want to alert the councillors to the fact that Kingsway is an extremely busy street, and it's getting busier all the time, in both directions, east and west, starting at 6:00 in the morning. So when there was talk about the allowance of the sidewalk and so on, I think some thought should be, should be put to that issue, if there are going to be families and children, and they're going to be cars parked in front of the building, and 86 bicycles. I'm not sure that that's, that another look isn't needed at the safety of the whole arrangement. I'm in favour of building more housing in the neighbourhood, we need it, for goodness sake. I'm in favor of building more housing in the neighborhood. We need it for goodness sakes. And I've said this before on other occasions, Kingsway is one of the ugliest streets in the entire lower mainland. And this area, in fact, that you're rebuilding is one of the most ugly areas. So anything new that goes up is going to be an improvement. On the other hand, I do care about aesthetics and I noticed that the mayor opened up with an acknowledgement that we're on native land. I've made this pitch before with another building. I'd like to see some aesthetics devoted to the native issue in the building. There's no reason why there can't be six pieces of wooden sculpture on each floor, one on each floor of the six floors, or why there can't be one in the mezzanine, perhaps one of some size, a fish or a bird. Certainly there are native people that need to work. I noticed too, there's no provision set aside to provide housing for native people. And native people need housing. There are a lot of native people living in this area. And most of them, of course, can't afford market rent. Which leads me to my larger point, and that is, I, I, I don't understand why the city would approve a project that, that is going to build forty-three market rentals. We need, we all know that we need rentals, but you know, we need a lot of non-market, below market rentals. I don't understand why there aren't at least half a dozen or a dozen included in this kind of situation. Is there a reason for that that I don't understand?
How this section of the, the meeting works, sir, is that we hear a statement from you and then we can take your best comments and ask staff these questions afterwards, but we don't, we don't answer questions directly, just by the nature of the public hearing.
But, but doesn't the city say to developers that show up knocking, they want to make some money off the housing market? And that's what they're doing it for, let's be clear. This, this isn't a charitable exercise going on here. This is money making. And that's where values and ethics come in. And we have thousands of people who are, who are without housing, thousands. The city denies that it's thousands, but it is. And, you know, a lot of them are in this area. I see them every day. Usually men sleeping on the street in, in sleeping bags or just on a piece of cardboard. So I know we can't house them all, but I would urge you strongly to think about requiring some below market housing in this project. And also some, some native arts and some wood crafts. And too many of our buildings are being built with plastic and metal and glass. And wood is falling out of use. I'm not talking about the whole building being wood, but there can be wood statuary, there can be wood wall pieces of maple or pine or spruce or beech or oak or cedar.
Thank you.
They're beautiful.
I just wanted to thank you so much for your time. We've hit the, the five minute limit. I do not see questions. Sorry?
How did I do?
Excellent. I, I liked your points, although I'm not supposed to say that in this meeting, but I, I do recognize your voice.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, thanks very much. Council speaker two and three have withdrawn, so we're moving to speaker four, who is Alex Grimby. It's Alex Grimby on the line?
Alex Grimby is not on the line.
He's not on the line. Okay, thank you so much. The next speaker is Jad Maru. M R O U. Not on the line either. Okay, the last speaker on the list is Tin Trong.
Hello?
Hi, Tin Trong, please go ahead, up to five minutes.
Cool, okay, thanks. I'm, my name's Tin, obviously. I'm, I'm thirty-three years old. I basically grew up in East Van since nineteen ninety-four and I, I really think that this would be a really good project for the community of just Little Saigon alone, because it's something that I, as a son of a refugee parents, like take pride in having a little Saigon here as well. Just because, like, it's a piece of the missing, like, of the homeland for my parents. And they, they work in the neighborhood as well. I think it just really would makes better, right now, it, this Kingsway block doesn't really look pretty at all with just the housing here on it. And I think it would bring a good source of pride for the people who live here and as well as just building a better community and culture. And I know that the owners of this lot is very pet friendly, so I have a dog myself and it's really great to see, like, a family like them who really is agreeable to letting people have pets as long as they're well behaved. I think it also creates a, there's a demand for, like, young people like myself and my partner, like, wanting to live in Vancouver at a reasonable cost as well. So I think that's another really good point to bring. The gentleman who brought up low income units does have a point, but I know that, that our landlords are pretty very lenient on certain aspects as well, so. That's pretty much it.
Okay, thanks so much. You do have a question from councillor Fry. No councillor Fry, please, councillor Fry, please go ahead.
I'm, I'm pretty fly too. Thanks, thanks speaker. I just appreciate you referencing Little Saigon and, and I'm, especially as somebody who's sort of born and raised there and, and was really passionate about it. I wonder if you've spoken to these, the architects and developers at all, or if you've considered, like, what makes Little Saigon? And, and how this could, could help revitalize the, the cultural aspect?
Well, I, I know that what makes Little Saigon is like just the community and the culture and just the, the people who I, I shop around here a lot and there's quite a bit of, of diversity and there's as well as quite a bit of Vietnamese people in this community. And I think as someone from my point of view, seeing that, like, someone like myself can have goals to have a building complex like this is a very good thing for young people to see.
Okay, given the rents are, are going to be fairly expensive market rents and that the retail components are going to be sort of double height mezzanine, which tends to be kind of, you know, fancier types retail. Are you, are you worried at all that, that this might needs a little bit more targeted kind of approach to ensure that it's, it's enhancing the Vietnamese Canadian experience?
Well, I think at the same time, people are growing within themselves and just like any part of the city, inflation has made its way through every corner and there's really no getting away from that. And I, yeah, that's really how I feel.
Okay, thanks, Mr Trong. Appreciate you speaking.
Cheers.
Thank, thank you. That's it for questions. So I really appreciate you calling in and sharing your thoughts tonight. And now council, I'm just going to make a call now, the first call to, if anybody else wants to speak to this item, please call one eight three 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 five three eight six one zero, participant code nineteen six six seven, hashtag it on the list. That's my first official call and I'm going to ask the staff, clerks, is there anybody in the chambers? I don't think there is. Anybody on the list, on the phone?
It is the clerk here, Mayor Stewart, and no, no one in the chamber and no one further on the phone for this item.
Okay, thanks. I'm going to make a second call then. The number to call is one eight three 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 five three eight six one zero, code one nine six six seven, hashtag to get on the list. And I'm going to check with you one more time, clerks, before I call third and final time.
The answer remains the same, Mayor Stewart, no one in the chamber to speak to this item.
Thanks. So I'm going to call a third and final time. I will take a five minute break, council, just to give people the chance to call in. One eight three 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 five three eight six one zero, code one nine six six seven, hashtag to get on the list. And clerks, it is six forty-one according to my clock, so I'll come back at six forty-six and we'll just see if anybody else has called in. If not, we'll, we will go to debate decision. So we'll see you at six forty-six, council. Just wondering if we've got quorum here, if I can start back up. I think I see six. Yeah, okay. So clerks, I'm going to just check and see if there's any additional speakers?
I'm just waiting for my signal and I just got it. No, there are no additional speakers on the line for this item and none in the chamber, Mayor Stewart.
Thanks so much. So I am going to close the speakers list now and as few or no public comments were received after five PM today, we're going to close the receipt of public comments and move on to hearing closing comments and making a decision. Does the applicant have any closing comments?
Yes, your worship, just a couple of, just in response to a couple of the speakers. The, the gentleman speaking about wood elements, well, I'm, I'm happy to, to, to let him know and, and let you know that the building is intended to be and designed to be built out of one hundred percent wood. So it would be a wood structure, a six story wood structure, as well as, you can see in some of our renderings, that the, the upper level, as well as all of the soffits and return elements are also intended to be out of Western red cedar. And in regards to the Little Saigon, I think that's actually an interesting opportunity. So I'm definitely, should council, should council choose to move this, this project forward, I'll definitely bring that up to our clients through the design development process to see if there's some way that we can integrate some, some aspects of Little Saigon. So I think that's, that's a really neat idea. And that's it for me.
Thanks so much. Staff have any closing comments?
And no, we don't have anything further to add. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Council, any questions to staff? I don't see anybody on the list. So I don't see anybody. Do we have a mover for this report?
I'm sorry, councillor Kirby Young.
Sorry, I do see two councillors have just popped on the list. Councillor Fry, you have up to five minutes for questions.
Yeah, actually, Mayor, I was, I was prepared to move it, but I was also, I submitted an amendment to the clerks and.
So we can't, can't do that yet because we haven't moved it? So if you want to, if you.
Miss Mayor Stewart, I moved it councillor Kirby Young.
I, I didn't have a seconder and I was just, why, why I paused is because two councillors popped on the list and I was just going to allow them to ask questions if they had them. So councillor Fry, if, do you have any questions?
I did not, no, I put myself on for, to move it.
Right, and I'll shift that queue in a second. I'm just going to move to councillor Carr, who's also on the list. Councillor Carr, do you have any questions for staff?
No, I was going to speak to the motion.
Okay, so I am going to now, sorry, I heard it was moved. I'm sorry, I didn't hear who moved it.
Councillor Kirby Young.
Councillor Dominado. Okay, now I'm moving to the main queue and if folks want to put themselves on the list, please go ahead. So councillor Fry, I've got you on the list. Please go ahead, up to five minutes.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. And I, I submitted an amend and, to the clerks and council, remember when we, we had a similar, I put forward a similar amendment that legal reviewed and said was fine on a project by the Charred Group on Houston Sunrise. And basically this is really just ensuring that the applicant work with staff to protect and enhance the existing retail street character. And specifically in the context of Little Saigon, which, you know, it is, has been identified as a sort of a cultural asset for our city. And we've been developing programs to try and enhance that. And I think this is a great opportunity to, for, to work with the applicant specifically on ensuring that we are enhancing and supporting. with the applicant specifically on ensuring that we are enhancing and supporting Vietnamese Canadian culture on that particular strip of Kingsway.
Okay, do I have a seconder for this?
Second, councillor Dominado.
councillor Dominado. Okay, I've moved us to the amendment queue. If anybody wants to speak to this, please put yourself on the list. I don't see anybody on the list, so I can call a vote on this amendment. So I'm calling the vote now. Anybody, anybody need a vote assist? I'm not seeing a Oh, it's not up yet, sorry. We're just waiting for the clerks to trigger the vote. But it looks like councillor Dejanova will need a vote assist, clerks. There we go. councillor Dejanova, how would you like to vote?
Hi, Mayor Stewart.
Yes.
I've been trying to unmute myself, but I think every time I do, someone else on the system mutes me. I'm just signing on to WebEx now. But if you could, I did actually have a question, but I didn't get on in time, so I'll abstain from this one.
You're going to abstain. Okay, I'll get the clerks to mark you an abstention. I can actually probably do that. Clerks, could I also just call your attention to just the way the names are situated on the voting queue? They've got me in councillor Bly's seat, so you might want to change that. councillor Dejanova is marked in abstention. So I have just marked that on the, so that has passed, council, with none opposed. Thanks so much. And going to go back to the main queue here, councillor Frye, anything else?
Yeah, no, I'm good. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. councillor Carr, up to five minutes.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Well, take five. I'm just appreciative of the, of the project. I understand the rents are not where we want to see the rents head into the future, but I am satisfied that with the comments made by the applicant, that the belief is that the client would be willing to look at some measures for the existing tenants to achieve some comparable level of affordability. So I'm pleased with that statement. I'm happy about the passive house equivalent and the extensive green roof and the integrated rainwater management and the building being built out of wood. So I'm happy to support.
Thanks so much. councillor Swanson, up to five.
So I'm with Mr. Patterson on this one. Maybe it's because we're both septuagenarians, but I think we should at least replace the affordability that we're losing. So that would mean five units at 8:32 to 12:45. And the highest of the existing units at 12:45 is about $400 less than the lowest price unit that's being planned. Plus, the developer is getting a DCL waiver of over $600,000, plus they're getting a couple of extra floors. So I just think we have to push harder for affordability and that's where my vote is going to go. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Council, that, I'm just looking here, that is it for council comments and debates. So I'm going to call a vote on this project. We're voting on the amended, amended report. So I think clerks to trigger that. There we go. councillor Dejanova, do you need?
Yes, I will, Mr. Mayor. In favor, please.
Okay. councillor Bly, councillor Bly absent?
I'm right here, Mayor.
Oh, sorry. Okay, I should have looked on the screen.
Yeah, we are definitely voting for each other at this point.
We've changed it around now, so it should be okay. So I think you should be fine if you, if you want to vote on screen, or you can have a vote assist if you like.
It shows me having already voted, so I actually, from my
Yeah, not on, not on, not on the mains, not on the main screen. So if you want, all the vote assist you hear, how would you like to vote?
In favor, but just to be very clear, my voting screen shows that I already voted in favor. So I think it's
Okay, thanks. So we'll try to get the clerks to work on that, that council that has passed. If you want to pull that vote up on screen, that has passed with councillor Swanson in opposition. And just going to check, yeah, so that's up on, the voting result is up on the public screen now. And that concludes this item. Thanks so much, council. We're going on to our second second item here. Just give me one second. Right, second item is the CD1 rezoning of 4795 Main Street. I just, I'll call again at the beginning. If anybody wants to declare a conflict of interest on this item, please let me know and then state your reason and we'll, if you don't, I'm going to move on. I just want to remind council to include the recommendations from the yellow memo distributed on November 19th when moving the motion for this project. And the clerk will now read the application and summary correspondence.
This is an application by the Strand Development to rezone 4745 to 4795 Main Street from Commercial District to CD1 Comprehensive Development District to permit the development of a six-story mixed-use building with 89 secured rental housing units, a height of 22 meter and a floor space ratio of 3.7 are proposed. The general manager planning urban design and sustainability recommends approval subject to conditions set out in the summary and recommendation of the public hearing agenda. The following correspondence has been received since referred to public hearing and prior to the close of the speaker list and we see the public comments. Thirty-nine pieces of correspondence in support and one piece of correspondence opposition. And this represents all correspondence received up to 4:30 PM today.
Great, thanks so much. If there are speakers who want to speak to this item, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, participant code 19667 pound sign to get on the list. And we have Jim Spleen from the rezoning, he's a rezoning planner. Here, we will see the presentation because we do have speakers. So, Mr. Spleen, please go ahead, whenever you're ready to present.
Thank you, Mayor. This application proposes to rezone 4745 to 4795 Main Street under the Secured Market Rental Housing Policy, also known as Rental 100. This is an application for a site on the west side of Main Street at the intersection of Main and East 32nd. It's currently zoned C2, which permits mixed-use development. Sites to the north, east, and south are also zoned C2, while the homes to the west across the rear lane are zoned RS1. This image shows an aerial view of the site facing north. The site is approximately 1,800 square meters in size. The width of the road in this location is approximately 85 foot. This image is taken from Main Street facing southwest. The site is currently occupied by a vehicle dealership with two small buildings in the northwestern corner. This area of Main Street has a range of local amenities, shops, and services. It also includes bus route number three between Marine Drive and downtown. There are three elementary schools located within a kilometer of the site. The Vancouver School Board enrollment numbers indicate that enrollment vacancies currently exist at two of these schools. There are four group childcares and three local parks located within 800 meters of the site. This proposal has been assessed under the Secured Market Rental Housing Policy, also known as Rental 100. On November 26, 2019, council approved amendments to this policy and renamed it the Secured Rental Policy. As the rezoning application was perceived before this date, the proposal is being assessed under the original Secured Market Rental Housing Policy. This application proposes to rezone the site from C2 to CD1 to permit the development of a six-story building with 89 secured market rental units and commercial uses at grade. The maximum height of the proposal is 22 meters with a floor space ratio of 3.7. The unit mix includes 28 two-bedroom and four-three bedrooms, which achieves the family unit mix of 35%, as required by the family room housing mix policy. As part of Restart Smart Vancouver, in response to the pandemic, the proposal will create approximately 312 new onsite and offsite jobs during the recovery phase. The applicant has not chosen to take a DCL waiver at the rezoning stage. However, this slide has been included to show the average market rents for newer buildings on the east side in blue and the relative affordability of renting when compared to the cost of home ownership shown on the right-hand side in the red column. A pre-application open house was held in August of 2019 and was attended by 14 people. Following submission of rezoning application, an open house was held in November 2019 and was attended by approximately 33 people. The details of the application have been made available on our website with a staff contact provided for further information if required. In total, we had 42 pieces of feedback received. The key themes of support included the creation of secured rental housing and the support for the location of this housing on Main Street. The key themes of concern included the design of the building and the lack of onsite car parking. In reviewing the application, staff have determined that the proposed height, massing, car parking, and mix of use are an appropriate response for this site. Shown here is an outline of the design development of the proposal through the rezoning. The images on the left show the original proposal, while the images on the right show the updates after recommendations from the panel, as well as feedback from the open house and from staff. The massing and the interaction with the streetscape on Main Street have been improved. The size of the amenities spaces have been greatly, greatly increased, while the setbacks on the upper floors at the rear have been maintained to reduce the impact on homes to the west. These changes have all been outlined in appendix B of the report. In summary, staff recommend approval of this application to rezone the site from C2 to CD1, subject to the conditions outlined in appendix B of the report, as it meets the intent of the Rental 100 program. Staff also recommend approval of the yellow memo submitted to council that allows the applicant to enter into a latecomer agreement for the excess infrastructure upgrade. If approved, the application would provide 89 new secured market rental apartments and contribute to the rental targets outlined within housing Vancouver. Thank you. And now I understand the applicant would like to say a few words.
Thanks, yes. Invite the applicant. I understand you, there is one PowerPoint slide you'd like clerks to put up on the screen. So I'll wait for that to happen and then whenever you'd like to go ahead.
Great, thank you very much. My name is Taizo Yamamoto with Yamamoto Architecture. I'll just keep it really brief. Jim did a great job outlining the proposal. This is a great location for rental. It's on Main Street, close to transit, close to parks, and close to underserved schools. We also have a chance here with the fact that the current site is a parking lot essentially to create some of the fabric of Main Street and connect it further south and kind of reinforce that pedestrian experience along that stretch of Main Street. As Jim mentioned, we've enlarged the amenity, both indoor and outdoor, as we've developed the design. And we've also spent some time to really break down the elevation that you can see here to respond to a more finer-grain scale and more finer-grain retail kind of frontage. So we were the architects for the Parthenon Building in Kitzallano, which is actually called the Grace, and some of the members of the development team are the same as well. And we learned quite a few things there about, you know, the spacing of the piers and the way that reinforces a more comfortable retail experience. And it also fosters the smaller retail storefronts to fit into the larger building while preserving the kind of the more eclectic scale of Main Street. So that's basically all the comments. Just to touch on a few things that were raised with the last application, we are providing the widened sidewalk over 18 feet, the 5.5 meter that engineering requires, which is about seven feet of our set from this, from the property line along Main Street. And we are also providing an enhanced sidewalk along the south. And this will be a wood frame building above the concrete retail and it will be pet frame. So thank you very much.
Thank you. There are some questions and a reminder to council, this is your only chance to ask applicants questions. Of course, you can ask questions to staff as well. councillor Carr, please go ahead, up to five minutes.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. That's a holdover from the last
Oh, okay, thanks. councillor Kirby Young.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question for the applicant. And I'm glad that you referenced the Parthenon, because I get, I hear comments on that, positive ones all the time. But you used a term, I wanted to clarify, and you were talking, I think you said it was widened piers, I believe, if that's correct, in terms of the retail experience. Can you expand on what that means for me, please?
Sure. I, when I refer to the piers, if you see the elevation, you can see that a lot of the elements that are on the upper floors carry right down to the ground. And what it does is it breaks up the extent of glazing into smaller pieces. So if somebody has a shop that fits in between those piers, it really defines the space of that one store. And in a way, it's a bit more of a traditional approach to storefronts, as opposed to some developments where you have a continuous strip of glazing and where one retail store ends and the next begins is a bit less defined. So I think there's certain details that we did with the Grace or the Parthenon Building that really help that feel more comfortable. And, you know, the pedestrian scale is much more human. It doesn't feel like it's relentless and goes on forever because you have these, this rhythm of the piers that alternates with the glass and the varied storefronts.
Okay, when you say piers, the IERS?
Yes, like the columns, kind of, of the cladding that come down to ground.
Okay, well, that's, that's helpful. So that in conjunction with the widened sidewalk creates that kind of cumulative or kind of aggregating pedestrian retail experience? Is that what you're describing?
Exactly, yeah.
Okay. And in terms of the rear of the building, how does that interface with, sort of into the single-family homes immediately behind there?
So this is an atypically narrow site. So with C2, which is kind of the base zoning that we're working from, that's sort of steadying the basic setbacks and the basic building envelope. And so we're pushed kind of west because of that widened sidewalk and the widened requirement from engineering. But we're also pushing east as much as we can so that we're preserving the privacy for the single family to the west and stepping back the upper floors as well to reduce shadowing and to further increase the privacy. So the second level will be a landscaped podium. So that will provide additional screening, landscaping on top of the concrete, so it can be more robust and larger. So that'll help provide some screening as well as amenity for the residents. And in other ways, it's performing as a C2 building, except for the additional step-back upper floors.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate the clarifications.
Thanks so much. councillor Swanson's next.
Yeah, just one question for the applicant. Are you planning to get provincial or federal financing?
I can take that one. Riley Murray from Strand here. At present, we do not have any plans to, or commitments to obtain government financing, although we haven't started the financing, I would say, construction financing process for the project. So if we were to qualify, we may consider it. On previous rental projects that we've done in the city of Vancouver in the last few years, we have used conventional financing and haven't, have not used government financing. So I can't say for certain that we wouldn't use it, but based on the past, I think we may not.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. councillor Frye.
Yeah, a question for
Um, yeah, a question for the applicant, I guess, just off the the top. Um, and the revised design, uh, what happened to the the cornice? I kind of liked that feature.
So I think, um, this is kind of a, this is a different neighborhood a little bit than Care- uh, Kitsilano, obviously. And I think we're looking more to a bit more of a contemporary, modern expression for this stretch of of Main Street. So, you know, it was, it was an aesthetic decision and we also wanted to, um, create a contrast between the flat parapet of the corner versus the overhang that's in the recess setback area. So it's it's a bit of a different, um, uh, animal than the than the Parthenon Building. Um, but we feel like it fits with the kind of more modern eclectic character of Main Street.
Fair enough. And that was at the direction of UDP or that was the design decision?
Yeah, UDP, um, commented more on just breaking up the overall building scale. And I think that was done through a different change in materials and the change of, uh, of, um, window size and and color, um, less about specific details like the cornice.
Interesting. Okay. I mean, everybody's a critic. That's okay. It's still a nice looking building. I like, I like the cornice approach, but I I can appreciate that, uh, you're going for more contemporary look. Um, how how's the the math working on this? Am I, am I reading this application correct that that you're not seeking DCL waivers?
Uh, that's correct. We are not seeking the DCL waiver on this project.
Is 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 this, is there something exceptionally different that you're doing? I mean, I'm happy to see that. Um, so kudos to you. Is there something exceptionally different going on here?
Uh, no, I would, uh, you know, I would say it's a standard rental one hundred building. The building is being developed as such for, um, long-term holding income, I would say. Um, the approach is to, yeah, take a long-term look and, uh, own a building in a good location, uh, is our rationale for, uh, doing that.
Okay, well, that's great. I can live without the cornice. Thanks.
Thanks. Counselor Carr, uh, up to five minutes.
Yes, thank you. Um, to the applicant, Mr. Mayor, um, I'm, uh, just gonna follow up on Counselor Fry's, uh, question regarding the DCL waiver. My understanding is that, um, that typically, um, to, uh, not choose the DCL waiver means not being bound by the maximum rents that the DCL bylaw requires. Um, would that be the case in your case?
Is that to the applicant?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Uh, yeah, it's we, the project will rent it market rents upon completion.
Right. Okay, that's great. Thank you. Just I I appreciate that clarity.
Thanks. Uh, Counselor Kirby Young, you got a couple of minutes left.
Oh, that's a holdover, sorry.
Okay, no problem. Um, so that's it.
Mayor?
Yes, yep.
I I, um, put myself in the queue and it popped up as. But yeah.
Weirdly, when I put you on from my panel, it comes up as you. So, uh, same with the voting. So I'm not quite sure clerks maybe can check into that, but you have up to five minutes, Counselor Fry. Please go ahead.
Thank you very much and I'd let staff know. Um, uh, yeah, I just thank you very much for the presentation of question to the applicant was around. I noticed that the concerns raised by the community were around parking, but I also note that you have a provision of seventy-five parking spaces, um, in an eighty-nine unit. Wonder if you have any comment on that specifically? I guess the question is that it strikes me that you're almost at sort of a one to one. And I guess a more specific question is how many, um, of the parking spaces will be allocated to the commercial versus residential?
Yeah, um, forty-seven, I'm just trying to, forty-seven stalls are for the residential and the remainder are for the commercial component. Um, so for the residential, we're at about a point five parking ratio. Um, our experience with, um, other rental buildings that we've recently completed is that generally ends up, uh, being the demand with a similar unit mix to this.
Okay, okay. So you're feeling comfortable with that ratio?
Yes, yes.
Okay, and just another question is what's the average size of the three-bedroom unit?
Uh, the average size of the three-bedroom units are.
I said two-bedroom, but.
Oh, sorry, two-bedroom.
That's seven hundred square feet.
Seven hundred square feet, average size, two-bedroom?
That's right.
Okay, and the three-bedroom?
Eight hundred and eighty square feet.
Eight eighty, okay. Okay, those are just, uh, those are my two questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, I think that's it, uh, for questions from council. I just have a a quick question for the applicants is when did you, uh, can you give me a date on when you submitted your application for this rezoning?
Uh, October third, twenty nineteen.
Okay, great. Did you go through the letter of inquiry process as well?
Yes, we did, uh, for that.
Okay, that's good. Thank you very much for, uh, your time this evening. And now I'm gonna move over. Counsel, I'm gonna move over to speakers. Do have a few on the list here. I'm just gonna read out the number. So if anybody wants to speak to council on this item, please call toll-free one eight three 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 five three eight six one zero, participant code nineteen six six seven pound to get on the list. And I've got the list here, council. We've got a few speakers. Uh, the first speaker has withdrawn. We have a second speaker, Bobby Huang.
Yes, I, good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, Bobby, I'm thirty-four. I'm a resident of Vancouver. I was, um, born in this city and I grew up in the, uh, Riley Park neighborhood. And I actually went to elementary school just across from the site at, uh, General Brock. So this neighborhood holds a very, uh, special, special place in my heart. I'm a supporter of the proposal by Strand Development to bring in more rental housing to the neighborhood and to the city. And I think, as was mentioned earlier, I think this would be a terrific addition to the pedestrian experience. I walk by this area every day. I bike by it often. And I I think it would enhance the overall living experience in the Riley Park neighborhood. But, uh, many of my friends who, uh, used to live in the area have had to move away because they couldn't afford to to own in this neighborhood. And I think this type of project will help people of my age who are looking to stay in the neighborhood actually be able to 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 rent a place here. And I, I think that's very, very important to me. And, um, as I was saying earlier, I, um, you know, I have a lot of memories of this neighborhood having, uh, volunteered as a, uh, pedestrian safety patroller when I was attending, uh, Brock School. And, um, I really hope that this project, uh, goes, get, is approved. And I, I think it has a lot of promise and I think it will do a lot to enhance the neighborhood because it's like right now, it's just a parking lot and it's frankly, it's a bit of an eyesore as well. So, uh, I would really, uh, really hope that that this project is is approved and hopefully, uh, shovels in the ground shortly. And, um, it's on a, uh, concluding note, uh, I find the city has a lot of programs that have been really important to me as well. And been an active volunteer in the Keep Vancouver Spectacular program to remove litter from our communities. And that area around Main and Thirty Second is one that I've, uh, regularly been around, so I'm quite familiar with it. And, uh, with that, I'd just like to say thank you for your, uh, time this evening and and, uh, that is all. Thank you.
Thanks so much. You do have a question from Counselor Carr. Counselor Carr, please go ahead up to five minutes.
Thank you. Uh, you know, Mr. Mayor, I just, I don't have a question, but I just cannot lose the opportunity to thank, um, you, Mr. Huang, for being a volunteer with Keep Vancouver Spectacular and picking up litter. Just wonderful volunteers, um, involved in that program. So just, uh, thank you.
I think that's okay. We can bend the rules this time, Counselor Carr. And that's it for, uh, questions, uh, slash comments, Mr. Huang. And I'd like to thank you too so much for contributing to the city. So thanks and thanks for coming in tonight. And that is, uh, that's it, uh, for you. So we're moving on to the next speaker, Molly Miller.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and Council.
Hi there. We have up to five minutes. Whenever you're ready, please go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Molly Miller. I live on Heather Street in the Canby Village and I am speaking in support of this proposal. Um, I have lived in Vancouver for most of my adult life and throughout that time, I have personally had challenges finding rental accommodations as have my friends and family. In fact, I, um, I spent a good chunk of that time living in a not very nice, uh, basement suite, um, because it, uh, fit my budget. And, um, and during that time, I mean, I was working for a prominent tech company, uh, but, you know, that's the, the rental market in Vancouver. And so this proposal will provide much-needed new rental homes in the Riley Park neighborhood and just add more rental supply, um, to the market overall. Um, and I'm definitely in favor of that. I, um, I'm also very, very encouraged, happy to see the, uh, the, the, the supply of bike parts, secure bike parking that this proposal includes as well as bicycle maintenance facilities. And it will definitely encourage use of active transportation. Um, it's also great that this, this development will be built close to transit. And, um, I know the the demographic that will will rent, um, are going to be, you know, at, they will support active transportation. So it's a great fit for the neighborhood. Um, and I I think the new retail will really help to provide even better walkability, uh, for for the neighborhood. Um, definitely more than the parking lot that it is now. And, uh, this is kind of especially key as though we're all working from home. So thank you, uh, very much for your time.
Thank you. Uh, I don't see any questions for you, so I'm gonna move on to the next speaker, but thanks so much for participating tonight. Uh, let's see, council, we have, uh, speaker number four is Christine Cox. Christine Cox?
Christine is not on the line.
Okay, thank you so much. I'll move on to the next speaker. Uh, number five is Karim Windsor.
That caller is not on the line either.
Okay, I'm gonna move to speaker number six, who is, uh, Michael Small.
Yes, good evening. Can you hear me?
I can. Up to five minutes. Please go ahead.
Thank you very much. Uh, my name's Michael Small. I live at four seven four six Quebec Street, which is one of the six family homes directly to the west of this development. So my wife and I have a very direct knowledge of the neighborhood and interest in it. Uh, when we bought our home five years ago, uh, we already took into account the fact that that parking lot, where it's just the site of this development, would be developed. It was never in our mind a question of if, but only when that would occur. And I must say, I was, I was, uh, relieved when thinking that through and looking at a building that's referenced in the memo to council from October that went up on Thirty Second Street, just kitty-corner to this development that is within the C two, uh, guidelines. It was, it's a four-story residential complex which created very attractive commercial space that's added to the Main Street neighborhood. What really makes Riley Park as an area so attractive is Main Street. It's that diversity of small shops and neighborhood restaurants supported by, uh, uh, community centers and various public amenities in the neighborhood. Uh, but what's striking is that there are no six-story buildings on Main Street. I walked the street today and I surveyed it using Google Earth, uh, just to double-check my findings. Uh, the first place you come to a six-story building on Main Street heading north from where this would go in is is at Main and, uh, Broadway. So that's more than twenty blocks further north. And the only six-story building on Main Street, uh, or close to it, it's in fact, it's, uh, referenced here in this document, is more than a block and a half away. It's on Quebec and Thirty Third, but that's on the south side of Thirty Third. And that's a new residential building that's going up among a complex of other six-story residential buildings. So it's really not a reference point. The neighborhood changes at that intersection of Thirty Third and Main and turns into a more residential area. So I'm opposed to this motion. I'm sorry, I didn't say that upfront, but I'm opposed because of the transition from four to six stories. Uh, this is a large lot. It's three consecutive lots. It's a big block of building. And I think it's gonna rather fundamentally change the character of Main Street as a commercial and a living experience with ramifications much wider than just this immediate area if you approve a building that goes to six stories. Clearly, there's a strong public interest. Other speakers have alluded to that in creating more residential living and more rental affordable living in the area. I certainly support that. But I'd urge council to reconsider the rezoning request and ask if the developers could come up with a design akin to the other residential buildings in the neighborhood within the C two zoning guidelines of four stories. I don't feel that this proposal actually emits, fits the criteria that are specified in the memo to you from October of neighborly fit and streetscape. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, just to, uh, remind folks, just to keep themselves on mute if they're not presenting or asking questions. Uh, speaker, you do have a question from Counselor Dajinova. Go ahead, Counselor Dajinova, up to five minutes.
Thanks very much for speaking to council tonight and for your presentation and your thoughtful comments. Uh, I'm, I'm curious to know if if you've sort of considered how this would fit in in the context of some of the, the planned development that, uh, in the neighborhood. I know that there's reference, uh, to a number of, I'm trying not to get too much into policy. I just wanna let the mayor know in my question, but understanding that, you know, a stone's throw away from this is, uh, what is known as the Little Mountain Housing Site that Holdar, um, ha- also had, has plans for. Uh, I hate to think about how much more expensive that housing has gotten since the time that maybe it could have been built before, but we're not here to talk about that tonight. I'm just wondering if you thought that maybe, although this would be coming possibly before something, um, on that site, that that site, I understand, probably would be six stories, if not more, um, you know, in in looking at sort of the the density and the development and the way that that fits into the neighborhood. Is that something that, you know, you, like, are you concerned about the timing of this, that it shouldn't come first? Or are you concerned about in general that you don't want to see, uh, six-story residential in, in this, uh, on this site or in your neighborhood?
Yeah, thank you, counselor, and it helps me clarify my my point. Um, the the Little Mountain Development, it's already underway. There are a number of six-story buildings already up and being constructed right now. Uh, that will change, um, Main Street, south of Thirty Third. Uh, it'll no doubt also bring more people into the area and more commerce. That's fine. But my point, my first point is Thirty Third and Main is a major intersection. It's a major transportation hub. Thirty Third is a four-lane street there. The whole character of Main Street and the neighborhood changes at that point. So developments south of Thirty Third are not a point of comparison for developments north of Thirty Third. And it's not correct to say, as it does in the memo that you've received, that the six-story rezoning project was located one block southwest of the site. It's actually three blocks southwest, one block west onto Quebec and two blocks south, south of Thirty Third. So I'm, I'm contesting that comparison. My concern isn't so much the timing because the, uh, the the Little Mountain Development is going ahead. It's the fact that you would now have a six-story building, which is in no way comparable to the other residential buildings, not only in the immediate environs around this part of Main Street, but along the entire stretch of Main Street. And I think that's gonna change the fabric of Main Street for the point of view of everybody in the wider neighborhood and the area who use it. The artist's rendering that we were shown, which makes the building at Streetscape look very attractive, assumes something doesn't exist, which is a very wide setback from across the street, well, across the street or other commercial buildings. So, y- you know, this building being three blocks, three adjacent blocks long and now as proposed, six stories high, is truly going to loom and it will change the nature of of Main as a commercial area. Yes, it'll bring more retail under what's currently a parking lot, but at six stories, I feel it's really gonna change the the fit into the streetscape and the whole ambiance of the community. So I'd appeal to the developers and the council to consider sticking with the existing zoning application at four stories, which other developers have worked to immediately around this this proposed site.
Okay, so four stories is what it is what I'm hearing from you. It's not about, um, having housing there, multi-family housing. It's it's about the height and the density.
Uh, I would, I welcome more multi-family housing and more renters in this immediate neighborhood.
Thanks for letting me clarify that and thanks for answering my questions.
Thank you. Uh, I don't see any other questions for you, sir. So, uh, thanks for participating this evening. I'm going to move on to, uh, thanks. I'm gonna move on to Ken Bregman, who's, uh, speaker number seven.
Mayor Stewart, the speaker is just coming into the chamber and getting himself set up. So if you could.
Okay, great. Yep, no problem. Just let me know whenever he's ready.
Indeed. He's ready now, Mayor Stewart.
Okay, great. Uh, thanks for joining us this evening. You have up to five minutes whenever you're ready. Clerks, three.
It's not going on. Mayor Stewart, the microphone is not turning on, so we're just having a...
I can, I've turned on some mics in the front there. Is the light on now?
Okay, started?
Yeah, that's right. I think we can hear you now.
Okay.
Just go ahead, up to five minutes. Thanks for coming in today.
Thank you for having me. And welcome, everybody, even though I don't see you. I'm, this previous speaker basically spoke a lot for me. I completely agree with him and his point of view. I myself don't live right behind the building. I live on Sophie on 28th Avenue, sort of within 800 meters of the building. But the principles are the same. The building is very high and the properties behind it are seriously affected. So my idea is that I basically don't agree with the approach the city has taken towards development in the city fundamentally. The development should come out of the community rather than from the property developer or from the property owner. Ideally, we used to have a city plan and we used to make community plans where we decided what kind of buildings we would like to have in our community and where they would be located. And the ideal way to implement this would be for the city at some point to buy these properties when they come up for sale and not to upzone properties. So I'm against upzoning, I'm against rezoning. If the city wants to redevelop the property or the user is no longer intended to use it for the current use, then the property owner can sell it to the city and the city will develop it according to the plans that are designed by the community and the city together. And then developers can be contracted to make proposals to develop a certain building somewhere in a certain style and we can select from those, or the city can select from those appropriate development. In this case, as the previous caller said, there is now currently an allowance for four stories already. It's currently a parking lot. Basically, the person has not used it as an housing complex at all. He's actually allowed, because of zoning, to build the four stories. And now he's saying, no, I don't want to do that. I want to build the six stories. Like, why, why is he allowed to do so? If he's not interested in building to four stories, then forget it. Don't build it all. And if the city is interested in seeing six stories there, then buy the property. And if it fits in with the community plan, we can do that. I don't think it fits in with the community plan. It's going to create an immense amount of shading for those people behind it. If the city were to develop it, basically those properties would be part of the development plan. And I would suggest that they wait with development until those people decide to sell their property at some point in the future. And then the city can buy it. And then they have bought all the properties affected in the west side of the development, then they can do as they please to possibly build a six-story building and then develop those other properties behind it in line with that. But until that's the case, I'm against this development. I'm against the upzoning, I'm against rezoning. And I agree with the previous caller that I, the only thing that I would like to see on Main Street is if you keep the FSR the same for C2 zoning, that a little bit of variation in height is interesting. If you want to go to six stories on some part of the building and go to two stories on other parts of the building, I would say I'm all for that. Even if the interest of the six-story building on the corner is interesting, it creates interest in the downtown, sort of the downtown Main Street. But the building is wide and six stories tall, and it doesn't go down anywhere else. So if they want to go to six stories, go ahead, but keep the FSR at C2 and keep the rest of the building lower to compensate so that the sun can still shine through onto the Streetscape and onto the homes behind it, both in early in the morning and during the day. And that the view corridors remain open to other buildings that may be built across the street, that may want to view towards the west side. If this building occupies a more narrow space as a six-story building and lower somewhere else, some view corridors will remain for other residents across the street towards the west side. So no, I don't agree with this block building, this six-story, single building. I have 45 seconds. I think I've sort of covered what I wanted to say. So, yeah.
Okay, thank you so much for your time this evening. I don't see any questions from council for you. So again, want to thank you for participating.
All right. I'd just like to say something, and maybe I can add something. There's very few people coming here, very few people speaking. It's very difficult to come out and take time out of your own life to speak here. Like, I just decided the last minute, okay, I want to say something. I wanted to prepare and study a little bit more, but it takes a real effort to come out here and speak. And so don't take the number of people as consensus that everybody agrees. The 1,200 notices sent out, and I came out, just at the last minute, I realized, oh, I can still sign up. So just because there's not much opposition here, that doesn't mean that there is not a lot of opposition out in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thanks so much. And sir, you can always participate remotely. That's what a lot of people are doing these days. We've had many, many people, for example, in our budget debate today. So I would encourage you to stay involved, but if it's easier to participate remotely, please feel free to do so. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, council, that's the end of our list. I am going to make our first call for other speakers. Is anyone who wants to speak this item? 1-833-353-8610, participant code 19667, pound sign to get on the list. And phone number is available on the live stream. So that's the first call for speakers. Clerks, do we have anybody on the line?
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here, and I understand that speaker number five is on the line.
Okay, great. Thanks very much. Welcome this evening, and you have up to five minutes. Please go ahead, anytime.
Yeah, hi, my name is Karim Windsor. I live at 826 East 23rd, Fraser and 23rd. I know the location of the property pretty well. There's a hairdresser. I've been to a couple doors down. Main Street kind of dies off at, I think it's 29th, where the bike route crosses and there's a pharmacy. So it gets kind of quiet. And I know next to the hairdresser, there's a vacuum cleaner shop that sat vacant for, I want to say, two or three years. So I support this project for a number of reasons. Think, one is it's going to pull the, it's going to make the retail more vibrant in that part of Main Street where it's, there's not much, not much activity. It's great to have rental housing because I don't know if there's a ton of rental housing in the area, and it's a lot of single families, so it'll add diversity to the, to the housing stock. I'm looking at Google Earth right now, and right across the street is Brock Elementary. So I think it's probably good for the elementary school that there's more families moving into the neighborhood. I go to Hillcrest like twice a week, and this project is right behind Hillcrest. So I think the area is amenity-rich, there's tons of amenities. So I think there's room for more density in the area based on the amount of amenities the city has provided. So I think it's a great project and fully support it. Thank you.
Thank you so much for calling in tonight. There are no questions for you, so thanks and for participating. I'm going to make a second call now. 1-833-353-8610, code 19667, hashtag to get on the list. And clerks, is there anyone else on the list?
There is not for this item, Mayor Stewart.
Okay, thanks so much. I am going to call for the third time, and then I'm going to take a five-minute break, council, if there's no one here. 1-833-353-8610, participant code 19667, hashtag to get on the list. This is the third and final call. Counsel Degenova, I see you on the list. Did you have a question or?
I, actually, Mr. Mayor, my apologies, I forgot we're waiting five minutes. And I understand that. I cannot take myself off the list. I did try.
That's okay, I got you up. Okay, thanks. So council, it's by my clock, it is 7:39, so we'll come back at 7:44 and see if there's any other speakers and for debate and decision and questions to staff. Okay, thanks so much, council. We'll be back in five. Is anybody else on the line? Or in the chambers?
I'm Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here. I'm just doing a double check. And I understand there is no one else on the line for this particular item and no one in the chamber.
Great, so we're going to close the speakers list because there's no more speakers. And I'm just running over to script. Hey, there we go. So there's no public comments received after five, so we're going to close the received public comments and move to the rest of the procedure. Does the applicant have any closing comments?
No more comments, thank you.
Thank you. Staff, any comments?
We do not have anything further to add. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. I do have you back on the list, Counsel Degenova. Do you have a question for staff?
No, actually, Mr. Mayor, I was going, I was, I was thinking in trying to be efficient that I would move the motion, but I see Counsel Kirby Young below me on the, so I will put myself below her.
Okay, counsel.
I don't have a question. Mr. Mayor is going to speak to the project.
All right, so we'll, okay, thanks. Do we have a second or for this one?
Move the motion? Yeah.
Point of procedure, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Counsel Carr.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that the motion is moved with the yellow memo, please.
That's a good point.
That's what I was on to do. So move with the yellow memo, Counsel Degenova. But I'll speak after Counsel Kirby.
Okay, and who was the secondor?
Counsel Kirby Young.
Thank you, Counsel Kirby Young. Okay, I'm going to move over to the other queue. I'll put you on Counsel Kirby Young, followed by Counsel Degenova. And I saw Counsel Swanson was on there too. Counsel Kirby Young, go ahead, up to five.
Yeah, thank you. I've often walked by this site, sort of in walks in the neighborhood, and it's particularly well situated. It's a great neighborhood. You've got, you know, sort of a great mix of old and new with the character of Main Street, but Matched Coffee there, but it's a bit of a gem because it's right near Riley Park, where they host the Park Baham, where they host the farmer's market on the weekends. And it's got the community garden, not Bailey Stadium. And it's a great neighborhood in terms of the feel of community. And this particular site with sort of the legacy use of the car dealership has always stood out for me in terms of the fact that it could be a lot more in terms of a community benefit. And so I'm pleased to see this project come forward and particularly pleased that it is rental housing, which, you know, we all know is desperately needed in the city with a low vacancy rate that we have. And so the fact that we're getting 89 secured new rental homes, I think, is a positive. I also was very interested to see that it was the architects behind the Parthenon because so many people comment and come up to me and ask about that particular building and, you know, sort of the specifics of why it feels different. I get asked that question a lot. And it was interesting to hear about sort of the piers and the columns, but the wider sidewalks, I think, is particularly important. And I'm glad to see that the city is requiring that in terms of the public realm. I think it was always important to create more space and a better pedestrian experience and never more so now than during COVID. So I'm interested and sort of quite enthusiastic to see how that comes to fruition in terms of what that experience looks like, to create that sort of human-scale experience. And it's pet-friendly. So it does check a lot of boxes for me in terms of the housing tenure and type and the fact that these are security units for the life of the building. So I am happy to support it. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Counsel Degenova.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I was going to close on the motion, so I'll just, like Counsel Swanson, go first.
Okay, Counsel Swanson.
Yeah, so here we are, 89 units. We're giving the developer about two extra floors. And we're not even getting one unit that the median renter household can afford, not one. So just take my vote as a protest against the total lack of affordability here. That's it.
Okay, thank you. I have Counsel Hardwick next.
And thank you for pointing that out, Counsel Swanson. I'm also disappointed that we couldn't stay within the four stories as prescribed under the existing zoning and had more sensitivity to context and neighborliness. It could have been accomplished without... without going through a program that is giving benefits for simply building rental at a market level. And again, I, I still am waiting for numbers that actually would support this from a policy standpoint. So I'm not supportive. I would have liked to have seen this come in under the existing zoning application without going up for the six stories.
Thank you. Councillor DeGenova, I know you want to close on this. I, I did want to say just one thing and you can close if you like this. I really like this project and thank you very much to the applicant to bring it forward and staff for all their work. Councillor DeGenova, you have up to five.
Thanks. Thanks, Mr. Mayor. And hopefully, closing on a positive note. I, I very much support this project and I'm happy to move this, the recommendations along with the yellow memo. And I wanted to share that I, I used to live in this neighborhood, actually. And, and before that, I kind of grew up in this neighborhood. My, my grandparents grew up, or my grandparents had purchased a home and before my mother was born. And actually just a block away from here on Sof- Sophia was what they called it, Sophia, some people call it. And Thirty-third, in between Thirty-second and Thirty-third. And I grew up walking to the corner store, playing at Riley Park while my, my mother took care of her aging parents. I then was able to scrape together finally enough for down payment on a home I, that I lived in up until twenty fifteen on Main and Thirty-third. And it was one of the first buildings, condominium buildings that was in the area that because there was no way I was going to be able to afford a single family residential home, I looked and almost fell over when I sort of saw especially the prices where you, you just go one block over the west side there and you're three hundred thousand dollars more expensive. And the reason I think this is important is because I knew how many people, how many families wanted to live in, in in a neighborhood like this. And this is a neighborhood that has General Brock Elementary School. I didn't go there, but my mother and her four sisters went there. It is a community that I find, you know, to be quite walkable. My grandfather, he was blind and he was a mop maker. He was blinded since the age of six and he and his guide dog used to walk around there quite often. So although it's quite personal for me, I'm sharing this because this is the experience that I know of this neighborhood and I think that we do need to do what we can to create more housing. I appreciate that the applicant is, is doing that and doing it in a very thoughtful way. As councillor before had mentioned, I, I appreciate the unique architecture, but also the, the fact that there has been care and attention to detail when we think about the sidewalks, the public realm, accessibility in the neighborhood. And I hope that, that this will be the first of many in the neighborhood. That being said, it's not that it shouldn't have that neighborly feel like councillor Hardwick had mentioned. But when I think about the previous site, it used to be a parking lot also for the Duff- Duffins Donuts on Thirty-third and Main. The little stadium market corner store, however, is still there and there's a number of little coffee shops, Matchstick Coffee right there on the corner. We're not talking about school capacity because General Brock is there, Hillcrest Community Center. You have Riley Park where, as was mentioned, the Farmer's Market is, Nat Bailey Stadiums, Queen Elizabeth Park. But it's, it's a place that seems to have a lot of amenities and green space and often we don't talk about this here at council, but not enough multifamily residential housing. So for that reason, I wholeheartedly support this process. And, and that's all from me. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Great, thanks so much. I don't see any other councillors on the list, so I will call the vote. Okay, clerks, the votes in. If you could flip it up on the screen, that's great. Council, this is passed with councillors Hardwick and Swanson in opposition. Okay, council, we're moving on to the third item. We've got CD one rezoning on seven two eight zero Fraser Street. And again, I'll just call if anybody has a conflict of interest, please declare it now. Otherwise, we'll move to the clerk to read the application and summary of correspondence.
This is an application by Cornerstone Architecture to rezon seventy-two eighty Fraser Street on CD, CD, C one Commercial District to CD one Comprehensive Development District to permit the development of a six-story mixed-use building with ninety-five secure rental housing units, a height of twenty-two point two meter and a floor space ratio of three point two four are proposed. The general manager of planning, urban design and sustainability recommends approval subject to conditions set out in the summary and recommendation of the public hearing agenda. The following correspondence has been received since referral to public hearing and prior to the close of the speaking speaker lists and receipt of public comments. One piece of correspondence in support disrepresent all correspondence received up to four thirty PM today.
Great, thanks so much. I'm just checking here for speakers. And this is item number three. We do have a couple of speakers, council, so we have Chi Chan here from the rezoning center who's here to make a presentation. Since we have speakers, let's just go ahead with that.
Good evening, Mayor and council. My name is Chi Chan, rezoning planner. I just wanted to confirm that you can both see the screen, see the presentation and hear, hear me.
Yep, we're, we're good on both counts.
Okay, excellent. So this is, I want to mention that this is a combined presentation for two passive house rezoning applications. Actually, for items three and four on tonight's agenda. Both items are submitted for rezoning consideration and I'm presenting them as one because they're being put forward by the same owner and applicant team. However, council, please do note that a separate vote is required on each of them. So both items are being considered under the affordable housing choices interim rezoning policy. Through this presentation, I will be referring interchangeably to the seven two eight oh Fraser Street site as the Fraser Street Apartments, shown in dark blue and the seven two four East Fifty-sixth Avenue site referred to as the Townhouse Complex in the lighter blue. The two sites are located in the Sunset Community Vision area. The Fraser Street Apartments are located directly on Fraser Street between East Fifty-sixth and Fifty-seventh Avenue, currently zone C one, which permits mixed-use buildings. The Townhouse Complex is located on East Fifty-sixth Avenue, just one lot east of the Fraser Street Apartment Site. It's zoned RS one permitting single detached and duplex housing. The sites are located at a C one commercial node along Fraser Street and surrounded by RS one zoning to the east and west. Along Fraser Street to the north and south are RT two duplex housing zones, as well as two existing CD one apartment buildings to the south. So here's an aerial view of the site looking north. Fraser Street Apartment Site is approximately twenty-three hundred square feet and square meters in size and has a frontage of about seventy-three meters along Fraser. And the smaller Townhouse Complex Site is seven hundred and sixty square meters in size and has a frontage of about twenty-two meters along East Fifty-sixth Avenue. It separates the two sites. Here is a view of the Fraser Street Apartment Site. It's currently developed with a one-story commercial building and parking lot. There are no residential tenants. Although difficult to perceive in this photo, the site slopes down gently across its frontage, dropping by about two point seven meters from East Fifty-sixth to Fifty-seventh Avenues. And here is a view of the Townhouse Complex Site, currently developed as a parking lot. So here is the map of services and amenities near the two sites. There are several shops across Fraser Street in the C one node, while there is a more extensive local shopping area about five hundred meters to the north on Fraser Street, starting at East Fifty-first Avenue. There are four parks, two community centers and several childcare facilities within a five to ten minute walk of the site. The two sites are also located in the catchment area of the Walter Moberly Elementary School and John Oliver Secondary School. According to VSB's Long Range Facilities Plan, there is current and projected capacity in the coming years at both schools. The number eight Fraser Bus between Southeast Marine Drive and Waterfront Station is a translink frequent bus service, runs right in front of the development site. There are several north, south and east-west bike routes in the area as well, including the Fifty-ninth Avenue, Prince Edward and Inverness Bike Routes. The AHC policy, first approved in twenty twelve, explored the delivery of a variety of housing projects, including increasing the supply of secured rental housing as an alternative to market strata ownership. The opportunity to consider new applications under AHC ended in July twenty nineteen. However, applications, applications received prior are allowed to continue to be processed under this policy. The two precursor rezoning inquiries for these two sites were received in February twenty nineteen and are therefore permitted to proceed. The AHC policy provides location and form of development criteria for rezoning projects. The map on the left shows the general areas where AHC projects may be considered, either along an arterial within five hundred meters of a shopping, local shopping area, or within one hundred meters of an arterial road. No more than two projects may be located along a ten-block stretch of an arterial road. And the star shows where these two projects are located. Both projects meet the location, spacing and form of development criteria set out by the AHC policy. The first application for seven two eight oh Fraser Street proposes to rezone the site to CD one to permit the development of a six-story passive house certified mixed-use building with ninety-five secured market rental units. An FSR of three point two four and a height of twenty-two point two meters are recommended. The second application for seven two four East Fifty-sixth Avenue proposes to rezone the site from RS one to CD one to permit the development of two, three-story passive house certified townhouse buildings with twelve secured market rental units. This includes two two-bedrooms and six three-bedroom townhouse units, a family unit mix of sixty-six percent. An FSR of one point four and a height of ten point seven meters are proposed. Here is a ground floor plan for both sites. On Fraser, on the Fraser Street Apartment Site, ground-oriented apartment units with patios facing the lane create a residential interface, while the southern half of the apartment's ground floor is for the commercial back-of-house functions and a parking ramp. The Townhouse Complex has ground-oriented units facing East Fifty-sixth Avenue and the rear lane, as well as townhouse units facing the central courtyard. As mentioned in the council report, the parking spaces for the townhouse residents are located under the apartment building. Not only does this reduce the excavation costs and amount of building materials, it facilitates the delivery of more family-sized units in the townhouse complex. As a condition of rezoning, access for townhouse residents to their underground parking spaces will be ensured in perpetuity by securing an access agreement on the title of the Fraser Street Apartment Site. So here is an aerial perspective of the rear of both buildings. The shared indoor and outdoor amenity areas for both projects are located on the south-facing fifth and sixth floors of the Fraser Street Apartment Buildings, which are visible on the top left of this image. As noted in the council report, the original application for the Fraser Street Apartment Site, received in December twenty nineteen, was for a building with an FSR of three point one seven and a height of twenty and a half meters. Following the recommendations from the Urban Design Panel and staff review to provide a friendlier pedestrian-oriented public realm interface, the applicant proposes to demise the commercial spaces from four, as shown on the bottom left, to approximately seven on the bottom right, to permit smaller, local-serving businesses to locate here. In order to ensure that these smaller commercial units are viable, or in other words, they have enough floor area, the applicant has added mezzanine floors into some of the double-height spaces. Staff recommended that the FSR be increased to three point two four to accommodate these additional mezzanine spaces. The mezzanines, however, do not affect the building's overall height or massing. Following the urban design panel review and feedback from the public, staff also recommended an increase to the height of the building to accommodate an additional outdoor roof deck on the sixth floor. I'll provide more details about this in a subsequent slide. So the proposal's residential component meets the DCL bylaw definition of for-profit affordable rental housing, a term specifically used in the Vancouver Charter, thereby qualifying the project for a waiver of the citywide DCL estimated at approximately one point three million dollars. A utilities DCL does still apply as well as the DCLs on the commercial portion of the building and that is estimated approximately nine hundred and fifteen thousand. The proposed average starting, maximum average starting rents by unit type are set by the DCL bylaw and shown in the green column. For comparison, average market rents in newer buildings on the east side are shown in the blue, along with the average household incomes required to afford these rents. The median household income in the Sunset Neighborhood in twenty sixteen was approximately sixty-nine thousand dollars. While the DCL waiver starting rents are slightly higher than the average rents for newer buildings in the east side, renting in these units will be subject to market conditions for this particular local neighborhood and starting rents may be below DCL waiver average maximum rents. While the rents in the market units may not be affordable to all Vancouver residents, the DCL waiver helps to enable development of much-needed secured rental housing. On this slide, the red column demonstrates the high cost of ownership versus renting. This is based on CMHC data and the monthly ownership cost of a median price unit in the east side of Vancouver ranges from approximately twenty-two hundred for a studio unit up to nearly fifty-four hundred for a three-bedroom unit. The ownership costs are calculated using BC assessment data, along with recent sales prices, a ten percent down payment, five percent mortgage rate over a twenty-five-year amortization period, and approximately one fifty to two fifty monthly strata fee and property taxes. If approved, all units in this, in these buildings would be secured through a housing agreement, which would prohibit the stratification and separate sale of individual units for the life of the building. A pre-application open house was held for both projects in September twenty nineteen and this was attended by approximately twenty-five people. Following the submission of a rezoning application, the application drawings and details were made available online, along with my contact information and a form to submit feedback. A city-hosted in-person open house was originally going to be held in March, but was postponed and substituted with a virtual open house due to the COVID-nineteen pandemic and public health orders on gatherings. The virtual open house was hosted on the city's new Shape Your City online engagement platform for a three-week period in June of this year. The Shape Your City website permitted the public to see all application materials, a video fly through the proposed buildings and to participate in a three-week Q and A session. Applicants, sorry, members of the public could also provide comments throughout the entire application period. Approximately seventeen hundred notification postcards were mailed out to local area residents about the virtual open house. And during the three-week period, we receive, this website received approximately four hundred and seventy unique visitors, a hundred and eighty-six of them reviewing multiple documents and nineteen engaged individuals who submitted comment forms and questions. In total, thirty-four submissions were received over the entire application period. This included twenty comment forms, questions and eight pieces of feedback collected either via direct email or telephone calls to me. So we did hear a variety of comments through the review of this application and comments were categorized and sorted to understand the key themes of support and concern. They're presented in the council report, but I will discuss a few of them here. We heard comments in support about the project's height, density, massing and fit within this neighborhood, as well as the additional housing options they will provide. We also heard comments concerned about the height, density and massing, as well as the lack of parking green space in the area. So I'm going to address some of these comments in the next few slides, but do note that the conditions in appendix B of the council report are intended to address these comments and reflect the revised proposal as presented this evening. So the proposed height and density of the Fraser Street Apartments is commensurate with typical rental apartment development along arterial streets across the city as permitted under various council rental policies, including the AHC policy. Furthermore, various architectural elements have been incorporated into the building's massing to mitigate the sense of heightened massing, including the stepping of the upper two floors back around all of the building's edges. Landscape and ground-oriented residential units with patios facing the lane also reinforce apartment buildings' residential character. The proposed height of the Townhouse Complex is the same as the maximum permitted height in RS one zoning of thirty-five feet. And the townhouses' ground-oriented units and landscape patios facilitate and reinforce this project's integration with the residential neighborhood to the east. Here is a similar illustration again in an elevation view looking northward and shows. Here is a similar illustration again in an elevation view looking northward, and shows the stepping of the apartment building and the height of the townhouses to facilitate their integration with the residential houses to the east. Following the Urban Design Panel review and public comments about the lack of green space, staff requested that the applicant provide additional outdoor space. The applicant responded by proposing an additional outdoor amenity area on the sixth floor of the Fraser Street apartment building, as shown on the right. In total, the expanded outdoor roof decks are approximately 3,200 square feet in size, up from 2,500 in the original application, and provide spaces for resting, socializing, urban agriculture, and children's play for both projects. As a condition of rezoning, access for townhouse residents to these spaces will be secured by a legal access agreement registered on the title of the Fraser Street apartment site. In conclusion, staff support these two applications, subject to the conditions in Appendix B, as they are consistent with the affordable housing choices interim rezoning policy. The projects would contribute a total of 107 secured rental housing units, all towards achieving the city's housing goals as identified in the Housing Vancouver Strategy. Staff therefore recommend approval of these applications. So as a reminder, there are two rezoning applications before you, and a decision is required separately on each one. Thank you very much for listening. Staff and the applicant team are available to take your questions.
Thanks so much. So the applicant team is here. The applicant team wish to say anything to this application or just take questions?
I think we're just happy to take questions. Thanks.
Great. Thanks very much. We have councillor Carr up for questions up to five minutes. Councillor Carr, please go ahead.
Yes, my, my question at this point is actually just staff. Mr. Mayor, I am interested in knowing why we are, I mean, first of all, if my understanding of the report is correct, the applicant has requested a DCL waiver. The projected rents are the rents that are in our own bylaws around, around the DCL, which is there are maximum rents specified. In the report, it states that those DCL maximum rents are actually higher, higher than the CMHC market rents. So we're giving a waiver on DCLs for rents that are higher than market, and I'm wondering if staff can explain to me why we should be doing that?
Thank you for the question, councillor Carr. This is Chi Chan, rezoning planner. So the, so the, the average rents for this area happen to be slightly lower. However, the DCL bylaw rents, they're set each year. They're set citywide, and they're in the bylaw. We do recognize that discrepancy.
Have we ever contemplated, has staff ever contemplated the idea of setting the DCL maximum rents that would be applicable for a waiver for rental housing appropriate to each district? I mean, at least east side, west side. Have you thought about that?
Hi, council. It's Yarley McNeil, senior planner with the rezoning center. Just wanted to note that the, the DCL rates are set by CMHC, and they do this on a, I think, once yearly basis. Their approach is to do it on the east side, generally across the east side, not specific to any one area or neighborhood. And that's why you're going to see discrepancies in some of these projects where the DCL rate is higher than the local rental area rate is. At the end of the day, the owner will only be able to rent whatever the market can bear, but there you will see projects like this because of the way that the DCL rates are calculated. Thank you.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Ms. McNeil, but can I just ask a clarifying question on that? I, I thought the CMHC specified what the sort of market rents are, but we, the city, set the DCL rates. Is that not the case? I mean, how can CMHC set our DCL rates?
The city doesn't set them. Actually, we take direction from CMHC on that because of their market data that they collect in the area. So we, we deter, you know, we determine, we accept whatever they give us in terms of the rates that they calculate in the area. But as I indicated, they're not specific to any one neighborhood. They're really very generally taken on east side versus west side.
Okay. And my second question has to do with the CACs. There's no, there's a waiver of the CACs, but there's no detail that is outlined around what that waiver is in terms of actual numbers. I've seen it in previous reports. Sometimes I don't see it, and I'm wondering if we don't have some kind of consistency about at least saying what the CACs would have been, and thus the waiver is. And can you just explain to me what the, what the CACs might have been and what the waiver might have been, even though it's not in the report, and why are we not putting those numbers in every report?
Thank you for the question. We determined probably about four years ago when we started doing rental projects in C2 areas that the cost of delivering secured rental far outpaced the benefit of, of a land lift coming out of CACs because you're doing strata projects. So we worked with real estate services for a number of years to evaluate that, and at the end of that, changed the policy in the city where if you're doing six stories in a C2 area where we know we're comparing the value of four stories of strata to six stories of secured rental, that it does not create a lift. And so because of that, we don't go into any specific reform evaluation on each project anymore because we've got that data internally to know that we're not generating a lift. So there would not be a CAC on a six-story rental project in the C2 area.
And we're at the five minutes, councillor Carr?
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Domonado, up to five.
Thanks, Mayor. And I have just a couple of questions, maybe directed to the applicant. It's around the commercial retail units and appreciate the additional units, but I'm just curious, are they suitable for restaurants or cafes or anything in that vein? If you could just speak to that?
This is Gwil Simmons from Cornerstone. I think Brent also from the project manager from Spire will probably want to speak to this, but certainly we've kind of evolved the design with city input and from the previous open houses that changing the CRUs and breaking them up to provide those kind of opportunities for coffee shops and smaller local businesses is certainly the way design has gone. Perhaps Brent can comment further.
Hi, Brent Beeson here. Yes, so with the advancement of, of the design, as Gwil mentioned, and taking into consideration what we heard from UDP, as well as consultation from the brokerage, commercial real estate brokerage community, we do anticipate those being uses here for tenants or, or commercial users, especially on the corners. If you'll note, some of the plans that she showed, what the desire is from us and UDP was to activate the ground floor, and both the north CRU and the south CRU lend themselves to that.
Okay, great. And I get the, the second question, as you're probably aware, is my colleague here, councillor Kirby Young, championed outdoor spaces in terms of patios due to the pandemic. And is there sort of sufficient space? The feedback was it should be more pedestrian-friendly and more public realm. So is that something that could be accommodated? Is seating outdoors around those CRUs?
Definitely. Yes. If you go and look at some of those ground floor plans, we've taken a step at this point, and we'll develop it further, where we would like to see good outdoor patio spaces, and in fact, that hopefully wrap around onto Fraser Street where it's appropriate.
Great. And then last question is just to confirm, I heard that in fact, the residents of the townhouse development would be able to access those two levels of outdoor rooftop amenity spaces. Is that correct? I understood that. I understood that correctly?
That is correct. Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Kirby Young.
Yeah, thank you. I wanted to follow up. Councillor Carr got into the question that I had, and I just wanted to follow up a bit on that. It was with respect to the DCL waivers. So this question is for staff. And I know that you clarified why the DCL starting rents may be higher than what is currently the average rents in the area. But my follow-up question is, realistically, when these are completed, the applicant will be renting these at market rate. And if that market rate, no, they can't go higher than the, the DCL amount, but if that market rate is lower, realistically, the market's going to dictate what they can rent at. Is that a fair comment?
Good afternoon. Thank you for the question, councillor. Yes, this is Chi Chan. Yes, the applicant would be, would rent at, the starting market rents would be capped at the DCL rate, but it's up to the applicant. They can go up to that. And if the market is below for this neighborhood, that's what they would rent at, what's starting rents.
Right. So we may have sort of a, you know, a pricing grid, or you know, a rent, rental pricing grid on paper, if you will, but realistically, it's going to depend upon market conditions at the time, right? So if they're lower, it's going to be hard to compete if you're offering a much, trying to achieve a much higher price. So you're probably likely to rent at market. Is that what I'm hearing?
Councillor Kirby Young, perhaps I will ask the applicant and, or the developer to perhaps comment about what they think about the starting rents in this area might be for their building?
Sure.
Hello, Brent here again. Yeah, it, it, market's going to determine what we rent at. For some of the, you know, two, three-bedroom homes, currently, I would say that the market is below that. Definitely.
Okay. That's helpful clarification. And then I have another, thank you for that. I have another question for staff, and it's just in clarifying the DCL waiver. Because anyway, two projects we have to vote on separately, but just clarifying that that also applies on the townhouse site. Is that correct?
Thank you, councillor Kirby Young. This is Chi Chan again. So according to the DCL bylaw, the applicant has the option to declare whether they are taking the DCL waiver at the DP stage for the townhouse site. The applicant has given a preliminary indication that they would like to take the waiver, but they're not required to do so according to the DCL bylaw until the DP, the DP stage. On the Fraser Street apartment site, yes, the applicant is required to declare and has declared taking the DCL waiver.
Okay. That's what I wanted to clarify because I thought there was a bit of a nuance there. So that's, that's helpful. And then I'll ask my current favorite question around, and I know, appreciate councillor Domonado asking about the patios, but can you just confirm the sidewalk width and how that compares in terms of what we're referring now or what's existing on the street?
Thank you very mu, uh, thank you very much for the question, councillor Kirby Young. This is Chi Chan again. So the proposed sidewalks for this will be approximately 10 feet wide on the Fraser Street side and seven and eight feet on, on the sort of the side streets along East 56th and East 57th. Also note that there is, that 10-foot is within a 5.5-meter or 18-foot setback from back of curb off of Fraser Street. It's the typical engineering sidewalk. It gives for a generous public realm in front of the Fraser Street apartments.
Okay. And is that sort of, that's going to be a new requirement moving forward? We're going to see more and more of that?
That is pretty standard. This is, that's pretty standard for engineering requirements across the city for commercial units on, on arterial streets.
Okay. And has there been any thought, the question, trying to just stay within the lines on this particular project, but has there been any thought with, with respect to COVID and any impact that that might have?
Just 15 seconds.
Okay.
I think that's Gil Kelly I hear in the background. If you could mute, thank you. Go ahead. Sorry, I'll add some extra seconds on there. Councillor Kirby Young, go ahead. Chi Chan?
Thank you again for the question. You know, this application was received prior to COVID, and it was being reviewed through then. Certainly, we have, we've looked at giving some extra patio space to the north and south sides to, to provide that space. And all units have balconies, as well as the expanded outdoor amenity space. So we felt that this was sufficient, even during a time of COVID.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks. Staff, I just have a couple of questions. It says helpfully on your slide that this application came forward in December of 2019, and here we are in December of 2020. I'm just wondering if you'll walk us through the, the steps this, this rezoning process has gone through, including your public efforts, which you've outlined, but I'm just getting, trying to get a sense of the flow of this, especially with the COVID impacts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the question. Chi Chan again. So this application, the inquiry leading up to this application, both applications were received in February 2019. Then the applicant made a full rezoning application in December 2019, and almost one year to the date, it's, we have a standard of typically 12 months from application receipt, submission to public hearing. And so COVID-19 has not delayed this application in any way. We've met our sort of 12-month standard on this one.
Well, let me just jump in there, Mayor. This is Teresa. We, we strive to set very reasonable deadlines for these. We, we did have a little bit, as you'll recall, in March, in April and May, we didn't have any, we might have had maybe one case as we were trying to figure out not only the, working with the clerk's office, they've done a remarkable job on the WebEx meetings and also figuring out the, how to handle public open houses. And then we started off slowly. We were limiting the agendas to about four items per agenda. So, so it's our expectation to exceed the time, the timeframes that we're meeting today, but we did have a little bit of a hiccup because of COVID, but we did get it here to it in about a year.
And just quickly, could you, you walk through some of the major components of that, those 12 months? I mean, what, what you're required to do. So for example, is Urban Design Panel, I think, public, you know, public input. Can you just walk through some of those steps?
Yeah, I'd be happy to, sir. Thank you. We, what we typically do is, she said, we, our, our goal is 12 months. We like to meet, meet that goal as, as much as possible. When we, when we initially get an application, we do a very wide circulation to 15 or 20 different departments that also take a look at these cases. We immediately start setting up dates for both the public open houses and the UDP. We, the planners, then sometimes there are other advisory groups like Heritage or Gastown, Chinatown. We do all of that public consultation, try to wrap up all of that thing, all of that. Typically, the engineering does a very thorough due diligence analysis on these. That takes a considerable amount of time. Engineering staff works really hard on these. We try to get all of that stuff wrapped up, all of that review wrapped up. Oh, I would say within six to eight months. And then once the planners get the report written and dropped in the, the city's SharePoint system, they go through a concurrent process that takes about three months. As you know, we'll put it in for all the departments to take a look at. Finance, legal, public works, everybody can, concur on those reports. Then we refer the item, and the item is referred about a month, sometimes six weeks prior to the public hearing. And that's our process. And happy to schedule a briefing with council and walk you through that in greater detail if it would be helpful also.
No, thanks so much. I just interested in these individual projects, just because we, you know, you hear so much stuff out there, and I think it's especially the impacts of COVID. So I don't want to take any more time on this, but thanks so much. And perhaps a walkthrough would be welcome. So thank you. Councillor, I don't have anybody else on the list for questions, so we can go to hear from the public. The number of the call is 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 19667, hashtag to get on the list. We do have speakers, two speakers, council, just calling up names. I think the first speaker is Nathan Davidovich.
Hello?
Hi, whenever you're ready to go, please go ahead.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I, I spoke to MLA George Chow, you know, and he is, you know, got lots of comments from people about the lack of transit in. comments from people about the lack of transit in Southeast Vancouver. And, and this is, you know, he's basically doing the work that the city staff should be doing and he managed to get one new bus route in April. But, you know, 57th Avenue bus route was promised as far back as, as Mayor Harcourt. And, and of course, you know, the, the city staff are not presenting it, they're not, are not giving any setback on 57th Avenue to, to have a bus stop even at 57th and Fraser. You know, and so this is the problem we have. And, you know, tomorrow you're going to vote for a new chair and, and vice chair of the mayor's council and Vancouver has nothing. We, Vancouver used to have three councillors on, on, on Translink Board of Directors. And even the first CEO of Translink was, was the, the city manager of Vancouver back in, in 1999.
So I can just.
Nothing.
Can I just steer you to this particular project by the, you know, the.
Yeah, what I'm just saying is that, you know, the MLA for the area, you know, George Chow is very supportive of having better transit for the area and there's nothing, I mean, the, the staff is talking about the Fraser Street bus. Well, they cut the Fraser Street bus by 25% in September. And they're not going to return those cutbacks probably for another three or four years. And as I said, the 57th Avenue bus or East 50, which goes into East 54th. You know, that was, I mean, the part on East 54th was cut back in 2016. And so there is lots of traffic problems in the area. And if we don't have proper transit, it's going to make it very difficult for the new residents who are going to live there to, to, to commute and they'll just continue buying cars and would not change over to, to transit or, or active transportation. So I don't know what to say, you know. The MLA, as I said, he's fighting for us, but we need the, the city staff and, and possibly the council to get involved to, to help us out. So, you know, it's fine to have more housing, but, you know, we need more affordable housing really and more, you know, which this particular development is giving you some of it, but not, not as much as, as needed, you know. And so that's about all my comments on this particular project, I presume.
Okay, thank you so much for, for calling in. I don't see questions for you. So I am going to move to the next speaker. Who is Nav Rakara? Rakra, sorry.
Hello, can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead. Up to five minutes.
Perfect. Well, well, first and foremost, I want to thank everyone for allowing me to have this opportunity to share a few comments. I am a, a young individual that lives in Vancouver since the early 90s. I live actually right across from the proposed townhouse development. And I strongly oppose the, the proposal for the townhouses. And because this is sort of a joint proposal submission, I think the, the main point that I want to come across is that, A, that I think they should be considered as separate proposals without encroaching on the other propos, propos, proposal specifically around parking. I know that this is, they're saying that the proposal is for the townhouses to have parking under, under the ground of the, the Fraser application. How, however, if you analyze and assess how that will actually pan out in re, in reality terms is those townhouses will actually use street parking, which is already scarce, to, to utilize. And they will not most likely be using the spaces that, that may or may not be provided for them within the, the Fraser complex. So what that means is in reality terms is what's already a congestive area for parking is going to be even more impacted. And, and one of the things that I recommended was to do an impact analysis to, to determine what that would look like for, for every, everyone else. The other main aspect is a sense of community and, and belonging. I know that Vancouver is, is very keen on providing green space and, and a sense of, of community. And I feel as though with this whole area, I, I believe some of those elements are being lost because of these large proposals for housing. Just as an example, this, this whole area is undergoing a massive change. Right across from the Fraser, this Fraser application of 57 Fraser, the, the same development developers built a, a, in a similar building there. A two-bedroom place is going for $3,000, which is absurd. But that's what market values enter. There's no green space. There's no nothing. Eight blocks away, there's a, a ginormous 363 home on the corner of 64th and Fraser. 363 home, 21-story building that's going up. So this whole area is undergoing a vasting. What I'm suggesting is that this area where those townhouses are being proposed, that they, we actually investigate into, into something that'll be more meaningful to the community of green space, playgrounds, something that will bring value and in, and keep integrity of residential neighborhoods. I feel as though, and I appreciate the need for higher density living, but there needs to be some sort of mindfulness about how to secure the integrity of residential neighborhoods. I know that if we look at a little mountain area, they've done a great job of trying to have a sense of community and belonging. This is slowly being eradicated in this area. I grew up here and my, my, all my kids to, to continue grow up here. I have many friends and family. And every day we see new development that's chipping away from, from this sort of sentiment. And I urge this council to evaluate how we can actually, A, keep the integrity of residential RS1 neighborhoods, as well as being self-contained with respect to parking, so it's not impeding on, on, on your neighbors. Because it, it's, it's because, it is a challenge now. If you look at that space right now, right in front, it's used either as parking, which is full at night, which is the relative community. If you take that away, where are they going to go? Two, you're going to have all the townhouse people also trying to find a park because they probably want to park in front of their, their place, not.
We're at the.
Walk five minutes.
Thanks much. We're at the, we're at the five minutes, but you do have questions from councillor Hardwick. Councillor Hardwick, please go ahead.
Thank you very much for taking the time to speak with us tonight. And I'm particularly happy to hear from someone that is very familiar with the nuance and individual characteristics of the neighborhood. Why do you think that there aren't more people from the neighborhood that are out speaking to us about the same issues that you are?
Because I actually led this initiative to talk to, and I submitted, actually, we went together for a commu- and a community sunset program when they did it. And there's a group of us that actually came in together. A lot of the community around here are not that tech savvy in order to be able to understand that there's, A, now a notice of public hearing that they're having an opportunity to speak COVID-related, whatever you get. So they have sort of entrusted me to, to relay some of those, those conversations to the council in hopes of, of some sort of understanding or, or mutual understanding of int- keeping the integrity of this, of this area. And, and partly because, to answer it, it's probably because of COVID, because most of these people would, would want to come in person and/or not having the, the understanding and the know-how to be able to call in or anything like that. And Mr. Chi will be able to speak to that because I've communicated to him many times. I've even sent him feedback with more than, almost a dozen people listed part of that, that communication to him. And I've expressed the same thing that I expressed to you.
My last minute, I, I think we, I think. We get five minutes here. Okay, well, I won't rush then. Thank you. What do you think? I mean, you have obviously concerns about parking and that, of, of course, is, is entirely reasonable. What do you think would be fitting here at, at this location? You mentioned that you might like to see these separated as two, two separate applications. But could you tell us a little bit more what you think would be more in keeping and more acceptable to the people in the neighborhood?
Well, I think the first thing is the townhouses would, would be better fitting if there, if we kept as an RS1 zoning and not, and not being amended to, to that, because you can still be able to, to have the, the integrity of, of, of community and thy neighbor with respect to that, that. If that's not po- uh, not possible, then a, a, a green space around this where, where the local community can be, can use. So I think one of those two options would be ideal.
Great. Thank you very much for your input. I think if, if you've covered everything between your remarks and my questions, then I'll leave it at that.
Thanks so much, councillor Hardwick. And that's it for questions for you, sir. So that is, that's all. And thanks for participating tonight, sharing your views. Okay, council, so I don't see any other speakers on the list. I'm going to have my first call for speakers. 1-833-353-8610, participant code 19667 hashtag. And clerks, is there anybody in the chambers or on the phone for this item?
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here, and we have no one on the line for this item, nor, nor in the chamber.
Thanks very much. And I'm going to go through that again then. 1-833-353-8610, second call, followed by code 19667 hashtag to get on the list. And this number, of course, is on Twitter on the live stream. And I'll check before I go to the third call clerks. Anybody else on the phone or chambers?
Same answer, Mayor Stewart.
Thanks very much. And last call, 1-833-353-8610, code 19667 hashtag to get on the list. And that's the third call at the council. So it is 8:43 PM. So we'll take five minutes just to give anybody else a chance to phone in. I'll come back at 8:48 to, to complete this item.
We're just getting the meeting up and running, Mayor Stewart. There is no one in the chamber and I am hearing there is no one on the line for this item, Mayor Stewart.
Okay, great. So we're going to close the speakers list for this item, which is item 37280 Fraser Street. And so seeing that we had no information past 5:30, 5:00 PM today, I'm going to close the, the receipt of public comments and ask the applicant if they have any closing comments.
Yes, your worship, just one from Spire here. It's Brent again. To clarify from what we heard from the previous speaker in reference to our, our existing building across the street. The two-bedroom rents, now we don't have all of our two-bedroom homes rented up, but most of them are going for $2,300 per month.
Okay, thank you very much. Staff, have any closing comments on this, this building?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Staff have no closing comments.
Okay, thanks. Any questions for staff, council? Okay, oh, councillor Kirby Young, got you there for questions?
Yep, just one quick follow-up question for staff. And with respect to the concern that these one speaker raised regarding parking in the townhouse units, and I know it says in the report that there will be 12 spaces, which I, one per. per unit, which will be in the adjacent building. And so they would exit the building and then walk outside, or how does how was that sort of envisioned to work just in terms of, you know, expectation for you like actually utilizing that parking versus on the street?
Thank you, uh, councillor for the question, Chi Chan, rezoning planner. Yes, uh, the townhouse parking spaces are located underneath the apartment. Uh, so any they would have to exit their unit, cross the lane, and then there is an access corridor and elevator or stairwell in the Fraser Street apartments to get down to those uh their parking spaces. This includes that's the same thing for their bike storage as well. And uh the both applications meet their minimum requirements for parking.
Okay. And and you know, just thinking about the just quick follow-up on that about the logistics of, you know, you're coming home with groceries or carrying things across versus wanting to sort of drop things easily near your home. Was was the rationalization for putting that underground to save on um the cost of excavation parking under the townhomes and the GHG with embodied carbon? Or or why was that? Why is it sort of done that way?
Thank you, councillor. Yes, that is indeed part of the question. So there are multiple items, certainly uh costs, materials. Uh, the parking bylaw does permit the director planning the discretion to locate off-street parking off-site. Uh, they are in close proximity. And uh, and uh, the further item is that um certainly pe- for loading purposes, uh, townhouse residents will likely and can park temporarily in the lane offload, and then, once they're done, uh, move their vehicles down to their designated parking spots.
Okay. And is it residential are the residential parking restrictions um currently um on the street?
There are no residential parking restrictions on the street at this time. No permit parking required on the street at this time.
Okay. But that's always something that could be considered if a future problem arises. Correct?
Uh, correct. Uh, um, residents may request uh residential parking permits. Uh, the city has a process for that. They would have to do uh, uh, engineering would send out a survey and a fifty-plus-one of the residents support that a residential parking permit program can be installed.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks so much. Uh, okay, that's it uh for questions uh from councillors. Um, right, so can I have a uh someone move this recommendation then?
Move to councillor.
Second councillor.
Okay, I heard I heard a councillor addition of a move it with councillor Dominado's second. And um, right, so we'll move over to debates. It has to be um, uh, we have to move this recommendation with the.
With the yellow memo.
Yep.
Is that enough? Do I need to say that as well? Move it with the map? Yeah, with the yellow memo? I meant to do that, but then.
That's okay.
The seconder chimed in. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
No, that's fine. Okay, seconded. So any.
Mr. Mayor, just I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, just a clarification. There is no yellow memo for this project. This is item number three. And item number four, there is no yellow memos here.
I'm sorry, I was looking at a a generic script. So uh, thanks so much.
A point of procedure, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Will we then need two votes?
We're we're gonna need. Yes, I and I'm just gonna get to that. So we're going through this item first. Uh, the the first one, which is uh, let's see here. I'm sorry, I just have to scroll back on. It is the.
Seven two eight zero Fraser Street?
Yeah, I'm just scrolling up here. That's right. It's the first item, number three, which is seven two eight zero Fraser Street. That is what we are have has just been moved and seconded. We are gonna have to go through the same process where we call for speakers and everything else on the townhouse complex. So uh, I'm gonna call for vote then on this first building, council. Let's get the clerks to trigger that. Thank you. And councillor Fry. Great. Thanks, clerks, for bringing that up. That has passed with councillors Swanson and Hardwick in opposition. Okay, council, I uh now, although the presentations were done on both of these together, we do have to do a separate rezoning for each of these items. So I am moving on to uh uh seventy-four East Fifty-Sixth Avenue. I'm gonna ask quickly if uh if there are, I will go right from the beginning. We have had the presentation, so we won't do that again. Does the applicant team wish to say anything to this uh building at all?
Mayor.
No, thank you.
Okay.
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here. Pardon the interruption. Um, but we do need to know if any council members have um.
Conflict.
Correct. And if you wish the clerk to read the summary.
So you want me to go right back to the beginning? I will do that. So uh, anybody want wish to declare conflict on this item? I don't hear anybody. Uh, I think you should read the application and summary correspondence received, clerk, just to be thorough.
It is an application by Cornerstone Architecture to be zone seven-two-four East Fifty-Sixth Avenue from RS-one Residential District to CD-one Comprehensive Development District to permit the development of two residential townhouse buildings with twelve secure rental housing units, a height of ten-point-seven meter, and a floor space ratio of one-point-four are proposed. The General Manager of Planning Urban Design and Sustainability recommends approval subject to the conditions set out in the summary and recommendation of the public hearing agenda. The following correspondence has been received since we furloughed to public hearing and prior to the close of the speakers' list and receipt of public comments. Two pieces of correspondence in support. This represents all correspondence received up to four-thirty PM today.
Thanks so much. And I'm gonna read out the number one eight three 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 five three eight six one zero, code one nine six six seven hashtag to get on the list. And that number's on Twitter and the live stream. Uh, we have seen the app, uh, the presentation. So just gonna ask the applicant, do you have anything you wanted to say to this uh project? Sorry, applicant team there?
Hello, sorry about that. Uh, no.
Okay, great. Thanks so much. Um, okay, so can I ask any question, councillors to applicant team or the staff on this item? Councillor Weave, go ahead, up to five minutes.
Yeah, mine's kind of a bill that I was gonna ask on the last project. Um, and that's when you are doing the CAC calculations on these projects, recognizing you said that there's no um CAC land lift between a four-story strata and a six-story rental as well as on the townhouse components. Um, do you take in effect the different values when you're looking at different areas of the city?
As the staff?
Uh, hi, it's Yardley McNeil, uh, senior rezoning planner again. Um, just staffer just clarifying for me that there was a performer review done for this particular project, which would have included the um townhome project as well. Uh, and they looked at specific land values in the area and the value of generating a uh market strata or privately-owned project on the RS-one site versus doing rental um rental townhomes and securing those rental townhomes for sixty years or the longer the life of the building and determine that there would be no land lift uh as a consequence of securing those rental units. So we know definitively that on these properties, that there is no additional land lift generated through the density permitted for the rental units.
Okay. Well, it's good to know that a performer was done on this project and that that was dealt with. And then I'll just voice, um, it's not a question, but that I am concerned that we are continuing to waive DCLs on projects like this, recognizing the need for um growth-related infrastructure and amenities in the area.
Sure. And you could definitely bring that up through the debate, too, if you like, Councillor Weave. Um, any other que- I don't see any other questions. Um, council, so uh, we're gonna move to the hearing from the public, and we do have one speaker registered, who's Nathan Davidovich. The clerk says Mr. Davidovich still on the line?
I believe so, Mayor Stewart. Mr. Davidovich, are you there?
I think the moderator said he's not there.
Ah.
He isn't here.
Okay, great. So I'm gonna move to the first call, then. Uh, toll-free one eight three 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 five three eight six one zero, participant code nineteen six six seven hashtag, get on the list. That's the first call. This number's on Twitter and on the live stream. Uh, so I'm just gonna ask the clerks, is anybody on the line at all?
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here, and we're just checking to see if anybody is on for this item.
Okay.
We're Mayor Stewart, it's just taking us a moment. We just have to sort through the list.
Okay, sure.
Mayor Stewart, yes, we do have one person on the line for this um item. I'm sorry, I don't have the name.
Okay, I'll ask. Uh, so uh, please go ahead, and if you could state your name, and if you're a resident of Vancouver, that would be great.
Yeah, my name's Navrakra. I spoke uh just a few minutes earlier.
Oh, yes.
I just wanna take this I take this opportunity because it's being presented as as two separate ones. Um, I do wanna uh thank um the council, specifically uh councillor Swanson Hardwick, to actually um acknowledging some of the of the challenges um that will be presented with this application. And I can't emphasize enough uh of that challenge specifically about parking. And um, I think uh the councils should um evaluate that um in reality, these people that are going to potentially be utilizing the townhouses, they are not going to be parking under the 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 Fraser Street proposal. They're gonna actually use street parking. So instead of being a reactive type of public hearing with respect to this proposition, let's actually be proactive and and not have to to go with public consultation again and actually um of uh actually consider that this unit be self-contained with respect to uh to parking. And that is the that is the reality of it. And, you know, um, I think this is something that I think only a few people on the council are actually um are are mindful of. And I think uh I I I plead with you that um you guys um evaluate this during the voting process for this proposal.
Okay. Thank you so much for calling back in on this one. I don't see any questions for you. So uh, thank you again. And clerks, um, have I done one call or two calls? I can't remember.
I believe you have done one call so far.
Okay, great. So I'll do my second call. Uh, one eight three 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 five three eight six one zero, participant code nineteen six six seven hashtag, you get on the list. This is the second call, and I'll just check with the clerks. Is there anybody else in on the list or in the chambers?
No one else on the list for this item, Mayor Stewart, and no one in the chamber.
Great. So uh, clerk, uh, sorry, council, I'm going to call one final time, third call for speakers. Uh, the number's been tweeted out and on the live stream. Uh, I am gonna wait, though, five minutes. It's nine oh three. We'll come back at nine oh eight uh to uh to finish this item. So we'll see you in five minutes, council.
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here, and I do not believe we have had anyone join for this particular item, but if you could just give me a moment to confirm.
No problem.
And I confirm there is no one on the line or in the chamber for this item.
Great, thanks. So we'll close the speakers' list, and we'll also close the uh rec- the receipt of public comments. Uh, just asking the applicant, do you have any closing comments on this uh this project?
Uh, no further comments. Thank you.
Thanks. Staff have any closing comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have no further comments.
Great. Uh, councillor Boyle, it looks like you have a question for staff.
Uh, oh, no, sorry. I just had a comment on the um on the uh report when we move.
Well, there's nobody on the list. If you wanted to move it, we can do that.
Uh, okay, sure. Happy to move it.
And let's see, I I.
Second councillor.
Just wanna make sure there's no yellow memo on this one either. Uh, staff, clerks?
Mr. Mayor, there is no yellow memo on this item either.
Sorry, I just have uh just having a little trouble with my script here. It's my fault. So uh, thanks. So councillor Boyle, you've moved it seconded. Do you have a seconder? I think I heard councillor Dejanova second.
Second.
Okay, uh, thanks, councillor Boyle. You wanted to say something on this uh project?
Uh, yes, I did. And and I won't repeat a lot of the comments other folks made to the previous portion. Uh, I think these will be a good addition in the neighborhood. I just wanted to comment specifically on the parking challenge that we heard uh from the resident who spoke um in part to say, you know. from the resident who spoke, in part to say, you know, we hear the challenge of limited street parking in neighborhoods across the city. And I think it's one possible value of the parking permit program that we are talking about to encourage folks who are used to using curbside parking, having free access to curbside parking readily available, but actually have off-street parking available, such as the new residents in this building would have, to encourage folks to use that underground parking. The parking permit as a curbside management program helps to make sure that those off-street spots are better used and that that, that curbside space is utilized for those who don't have other options. So just wanted to offer that that's a problem we recognize and actually in fact that I think we're working on concurrently in another area. And we'll just say I'll be supporting the proposal.
Thanks very much. Counselor Domenado.
Thanks, Mayor, and thank you to the applicant and staff. Brief comment around this proposal is I'd like to comment on the enormous value it brings to not only the neighborhood but to the city. We know from our own data and feedback directly from residences that there is a lack of this type of housing supply, particularly in the spectrum of the missing middle and particularly having ground-oriented, family-oriented housing. So I was really pleased to see the townhome proposal outlined here, as well as the shared use agreement that's going to be enabled so that residents of the townhome complex can access the outdoor amenity space and the proposal we just passed. And so very pleased to support it and looking forward to seeing more options like this as we develop out the Vancouver plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Kerr.
Yeah, I just wanted to add a comment on this, which is to say I really appreciate the passive house certified standard. I think that's, you know, those kinds of projects can become beacons and inspiring projects for other developers and applicants. So yeah, thanks for that effort.
Thank you. I don't see anybody else on the list, so I can call a vote on this item. Let's have the clerks cue the screen. We're voting now. Let's see, Counselor Domina, Counselor Dejanova. Great. Okay, council, this has passed with the clerks to pull the vote up on the screen with Counselor Hardwick in opposition. Okay, council, it is about quarter after nine and we're going to move on to the fifth item on the agenda. I'm not sure if we'll get all the way through it. So perhaps we can shoot to try to have, let all the speakers have time to speak. But I'll just, just keep us conscious of the time as we go through this last 45 minutes. Just asking first on the CD1 rezoning on 2924 Venables, item five, does anybody wish to declare a conflict of interest? And if not, we're going to move on to the clerks reading the application and summary correspondence.
There is an application by Ryder Architecture Canada Incorporated to amend CD1 109 Comprehensive Development District to permit the development of two six-story residential buildings containing 145 social housing units. A height of 21 meter and a floor space ratio of 2.02 are recommended. The General Manager of Planning, Urban Design and Sustainability recommends approval, subject to conditions set out in the summary and recommendations of the public hearing agenda. The following correspondence has been received since referral to public hearing and prior to the close of the speaker list and receipt of public comments. 19 pieces of correspondence in support, one piece of correspondence in opposition. And this represents all correspondence received up to 4:30 PM today.
Thanks so much. Again, the number to call if you want to participate in this, on this item, 1-833-353-8610, code 1966. Hashtag to get on the list. We have Marcel Geline from the rezoning center. And since we do have public speakers to this item, I suggest we move ahead with the presentation. And both slides are up now, both publicly and the webex. So anytime you want to proceed, please go ahead. Can't hear anybody yet from the planning team.
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here. I'm just checking with the planning team.
Okay, thanks.
Yep, we're, give us just a minute.
Okay, thanks.
Honey there, it's Marcel Geline here. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can. My apologies. I know I'm supposed to leave a few minutes between items so everybody can get set up. So I'm sorry about that, but we are ready to go with your presentation on this, on this item.
Okay, thanks. So good evening, Mayor and council. My name is Marcel Geline, rezoning planner for this application at 2924 Venables Street, which was submitted to staff for review under the short program on March 30th, 2020. Sorry, I'm just seeing if I can get the next slide, please. The site is a single parcel located at Venables and Rentru Streets and approximately 48,000 square feet. This zone CD1 and permits seniors housing up to 35 feet in height and a density of 0.75 FSR. RS1 zoning to the south, east and west permits development up to 35 feet and an FSR of 0.60. The CD1 district, one block north, under affordable housing choices policy permits five stories of secured market rental. Across Venables, the C1 zoning includes mixed-use development, one to three stories in height, intended to provide small-scale commercial that caters to neighborhood needs. Under the secured rental policy, the C1 zone block may redevelop up to six stories. Staff are developing new rental policy and low-density RS and RT zones soon to be considered by council. A majority of rent crew from Oxford to Broadway may be eligible for four to six-story mixed-use developments in exchange for secured rental housing. Next slide, please. The existing building constructed in 1977 is owned by Brightside Community Homes and includes 64 units of senior social housing. All existing tenants are covered by the city's tenant relocation protection policy. Next slide, please. The property is heavily treed and includes 18 city trees along the perimeter. There is a 14-foot slope on site with a low point at the northeast corner sloping up to the southwest corner. Records indicate there may be a historic stream intercepting the site. However, based on historical data, staff confirm it is unlikely the stream will be encountered during excavation or could be daylit as part of the proposed rezoning. Rezoning conditions and appendix B ensure if, if a stream exists, it is not disrupted due to excavation. And a landscape condition has been added to celebrate the stream's historic location and natural history. Next slide, please. The site is within a 15-minute walk of Three Parks, Hastings Community Center and Public Library. There is a bus stop directly in front of the site on Rentru. And the site is a seven-minute walk to the R5 on Hastings. Commercial services exist directly across Venables on Hastings Street and at Rentru and first a 15-minute walk to the south. The site is located in the catchment area of Dr. A.R. Lord and Vancouver Templeton Secondary, which both currently have capacity. Next slide, please. Rezonings are permitted for social housing projects under the Hastings Sunrise Community Vision for site-specific rezoning. The vision supports development for seniors close to parks, shopping and transit to allow aging in place in addition to encouraging new housing types adjacent to commercial areas. Next slide, please. This proposal is to amend the existing CD1 109 to CD1 for two six-story residential building, buildings of 145 units of social housing for seniors, families and those living with disabilities. The recommended unit mix includes 42 studio, 82 one-bed, 11 two-bed and 10 three-bed units. Staff support the unit mix as Brightside provides homes primarily to seniors, but is currently expanding its portfolio to include more family units. A floor area of 99,000 square feet, density of 2.02 FSR and height of 68.9 feet are recommended, including a reduction in FSR and floor area to increase the setback and prove that the contextual fit. What level of underground parking is proposed, including 36 vehicle and 232 bicycle spaces? The applicant is pursuing passive house certification. As part of the Restart Smart Vancouver initiative in response to COVID-19, this project will contribute to approximately 508 new onsite and offsite construction jobs during the initiative's recovery phase. Next slide, please. The Hastings Sunrise Community Vision does not prescribe a form of development. However, the proposal appropriately responds to site conditions, context and policy. Overall support of the form of development is based on the following. Housing of vulnerable population, the development delivers units to vulnerable populations secured for 60 years. Evolving context, immediate context varies from the proposed form, however, the area is changing. Council approved a five-story AHC project one block to the north and the anticipated six-story context along Rentru under the secured rental policy envisions a denser and tolerable form. Next slide, please. Massing and height, two separate six-story buildings are proposed to break up massing. Upper floor setbacks and changing cladding color reduce overall building scale in both. The design responds to the grades on site and reads as five to five and a half stories on the south elevation. Next slide, please. Setbacks, the west building setback aligns with the RS1 lots along Rentru Street. The width of the east setback is wider than a typical RS1 lot, providing substantial outdoor space and reducing shadowing of neighboring properties. Tree retention, 18 city trees along Venables and Rentru, three on-site and two shared trees will be retained. Tree retention and proposed planting has enhanced neighborhood amenity and screens the buildings from surrounding RS1 development. Next slide, please. The courtyard, the south-facing courtyard provides a sunlit outdoor space that connects the indoor amenity rooms of both buildings and assists in transitioning the development to the south. The courtyard has a thoroughfare that connects the lane to Venables, improving overall neighborhood connectivity and walkability. Next slide, please. The project meets the city's definition of social housing with a minimum of 30% of the units rented to households with incomes under the BC Housing Income Limits levels. Brightside will exceed the affordability requirements by securing a minimum 44% of units below Hells. The society has received funding from BC Housing to deepen affordability. The range of rents include 20% of units at deep subsidy rates, 50% of units at rent gear to income rates with an income maximum set at Hells levels, and 30% of units at affordable market rents. Next slide, please. Forty-four of the units were tenanted at the time of application. Most recently, 30 tenants remain on site. Current rents are at a rent gear to income with an average of $726 per month. The applicant has maintained regular contact with all onsite tenants, including three tenant meetings that the city attended. Communication with tenants throughout the application process has included individual interviews, meetings and drop-in hours. All tenants are covered by the tenant relocation plan, including financial compensation based on the length of tenancy, four months' notice to end tenancy, assistance with moving expenses, permanent rehousing options within Brightside's housing portfolio or alternative housing options if requested, and first rate of refusal, specifically all current tenants may return to the completed building at existing rents. Next slide, please. Approximately 97 people attended the pre-application open house. A city-led virtual open house was held from June 8th to June 28th, 2020. 317 unique visitors viewed the Shape Your City webpage, 162 reviewed multiple documents and 22 engaged individuals submitted comment forums and questions. 58 submissions were received, including 42 comment forums, eight questions and eight other pieces of input collected via email and telephone. Next slide, please. Key themes of support included the provision of affordable housing, building heights, density and massing, green space and open space and sustainability. Key themes of concern including building height, density, massing, building setbacks, parking and sustainability. Next slide, please. Response to public feedback, form of development, the community vision supports rezoning to deliver social housing. The proposal responds to the existing built form through citing setbacks, upper-level setbacks and tree retention. Further, the massing recognizes that the existing area is changing and responds with a denser and taller build form. Parking, reduce parking requirement, oh, yeah, thanks. Parking, reduce parking requirements lower the overall project cost to support the delivery of social housing. The project will comply with the Vancouver Parking Bylaw and the applicant is proposing a transportation demand management plan. The applicant is eligible for a total reduction of 60% of vehicle parking requirements. Sustainability, the applicant has chosen to pursue passive house with the goal to provide residents with a high level of thermal comfort and soundproofing and lower energy using costs over the life of the building. Next slide, please. In summary, staff recommends approval of this application to amend the existing CD1 109 to CD1 at 2924 Venables Street, subject to the conditions outlined in appendix B as it meets the intent of the Hastings Sunrise Community Vision with respect to the delivery of social housing. If approved, the application would contribute 145 new social housing units to help reach the city's goals identified in the Housing Vancouver Strategy. Staff and the applicant team are available to answer any, any questions. Thank you very much.
Great. So I'm just going to move right to questions. Does the council have questions to staff or the applicants? And again, this is the only chance you have to ask questions to the applicants at this point. I see Counselor Weeb, Counselor Weeb, then Counselor Domenado. Counselor Weeb.
Yeah, my first one is there's a significant amount of trees that will be removed from the property and new ones will be replaced. I'm just wondering, have we done a urban forest canopy cover of the project? And is there a grade that needs to be met with the proponent? This is a question to staff.
Counselor Weeb, would you mind if, did you need that answer now or perhaps because we're trying to get the speakers, you can, you have an opportunity to ask staff questions after the speakers?
So I guess my question's to the proponent, then I go second one.
Sure.
Recognizing the importance to the neighborhood of the creek that goes down to Hastings and the long-term plan to reconnect the neighborhood through that creek, I'm just wondering what opportunities, if a creek is found, that the proponent would like to put in? And what type of elements do you see adding to the project to show the historical aspect of the property?
Over to the applicant.
Thanks for the question. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead.
Thanks for the question, Counselor Weeb. One of the conditions put into the referral report from, and sorry, it's Graham Plant from CPA Development Consultants. I'm the project manager working on behalf of Brightside. One of the conditions put in the referral report did make reference to adding features related to the stream itself. We haven't really done any design development related to that work at this point. But I think we'd be very interested in working with staff to see what those elements would look like. A similar condition, as you're aware, exists on another property that Brightside is also working on. And I think that there would be some opportunities for some consistency between those two projects. for some consistency between those two projects as it relates to sort of paying homage to the historical stream on the site.
Okay, that'd be great. The one you're talking about's on twelve, is that correct?
Yeah, correct.
Yeah. As well as I know that there's people, and I'm sure the residents of Brightside, just to understand the land and waters that we surround ourselves with, so just some interpretive signage might be helpful. I think we talked about that on the former project as well. So great to hear that. Thank you very much.
Thanks, councillors Kirby Young and Boyle. Again, this is a great opportunity to ask applicants questions, but you do have another opportunity after speakers for staff. So go ahead, councillor Kirby Young.
Yeah, thank you. My question is for the applicant, and specifically on housing affordability. And I believe it was stated that forty-four percent of the proposed building units will be with incomes to or equal below hills' levels and exceeding the city's definition of social housing, which typically a third, I believe. You typically seem to have projects similar to this where you're able to achieve a strong level of affordability. So two-part question, which is, what did it take to sort of make that happen in this project? And the second part is, on the thirty percent units that say they're affordable market rents, can you define, give me example of what you mean by that in terms of affordable market rents?
Yeah, can you hear me? This is William Mazeroff.
Yes, yes, we can.
This is William Mazeroff, CEO of Brightside. So thank you councillor Kirby Young for the question. I'll take the first part, and then Graham will take the second. So in this particular case, we applied and were successful in getting a community housing fund grant from B.C. Housing. So that comes with prescribed levels of affordability. So it makes it relatively easy on a project like this. But in general, having a portfolio of twenty-six buildings that are aging means that they're often free and clear of mortgages, and we do everything we can as an offer-profit to bring affordability up or rents down as much as possible. Most of our residents are at rent geared to incomes. They pay about thirty percent of their income, up to hills' limits, but usually far below.
Yeah, and I'll supplement that. Thanks for that first part of the answer, William, and thanks for the question, councillor Kirby Young. Our intention is actually to hit far higher levels of affordability than that forty-four percent. That's what's being secured through the housing agreement. But if we continue to be successful through the Community Housing Fund program at B.C. Housing, the eventual percentage of units would actually be seventy percent. And the affordable market rent units that make up the thirty percent of the building are defined in B.C. Housing's operating agreement as CMHC average market rents. And as was discussed earlier tonight, those figures can not be very particularly reflective of within neighborhood contexts. So we think of them as sort of low-end of market rents, so not what you would achieve in a true private market building, but slightly below that.
Okay, thanks. Just a quick follow-up question on the earlier part. When you said that you're currently at the forty-four percent affordability in the B.C. Housing Community Housing Fund has been integral in that, but you said the intent was to hit an eventual seventy percent. Is that with additional funding at this point in time? Or is that over time with the units? Can you expand on that for me?
Thanks for the question. So that is the requirement of the Community Housing Fund is a mix of units. Twenty percent of them are offered at the shelter component of income assistance. Fifty percent are at rent geared to income rents with hills as the maximum income. And then there's the thirty percent that are affordable market rents, so.
Okay, so you're adding together the deep subsidy and the RGI to equal that.
Correct, yeah, correct.
That's what I wanted to clarify. Okay, that's great. Thank you very much.
Hey, no problem, councillor Boyle, up to five minutes.
Thanks, and I just have one question for the proponent as well, which is that I'm wondering, given the need for more non-market housing across the city, if there was a discussion about making this building taller to include more units? Or why it landed on the size and unit number that it did?
Thanks for the question councillor Boyle and Graham Plant, once again. I think we approached the site with two primary goals. The first was obviously to increase the amount of affordable housing that Brightside's providing on the site, to the extent that the redevelopment was worth pursuing, and then also fit within the context of the neighborhood. And a key consideration to fit within the context of the neighborhood are those eighteen trees that sort of wrap around the site. And in the renders, it does somewhat illustrate this, but with a six-story form, the building is basically covered by those trees, and to move any higher would have extended far beyond those trees. So I think we're pleased with where the project landed from an overall unit count, from a height, from a density perspective. If the question is, do we think there's a greater need for housing? The answer is absolutely, but I think we're quite happy with where we ended up here.
Okay, I appreciate that answer and the specifics of this site and the trees. I guess as a follow-up, I'd be interested to know, were the tree situation different or another possible Brightside building? Does the financing work out for you if we are able to allow more density in exchange for more non-market housing? Is that something that you think works in this type of project?
The short answer is yes. I mean, moving to a higher form of construction means moving to a non-combustible form of construction. So there are some additional considerations there. But yes, I think absolutely you can still, with additional units, there are some economies of scale, both in the operations and construction of the building that end up making the financial feasibility of a project still possible.
Okay, great. I will leave it there so we can hear from speakers. Thanks for those answers.
Thanks so much. So now I am going to move to the public list. Clerks, I have on my list, we have a representative from our advisory body. Sorry, I'm just pulling up my list here. We have item number five. We have Mark White from the Seniors Advisory Committee.
Yes, are you able to hear me?
Yes, I am. Please, thanks for staying so late this evening, and please go ahead.
Thank you very much. Thank you, mayor and councillors. On behalf of the Seniors Advisory Committee, I'm speaking in favor of the proposal and recommendation of city staff. We are particularly pleased that the development plan has strong accessibility and affordability targets, as well as high environmental standards. In particular, we've noted that the accessibility standards are congruent with the National Housing Strategy and CMHC Co-Investment Fund. And under the CMHC Co-Investment Fund, there are two options. Option one is twenty percent of the dwellings meeting accessibility standards, and option two being the entire project has full universal design. And we're really pleased that Brightside has moved to the entire project having full universal design, as well as five percent accessibility. We believe the proposal is exemplary, and the city should consider upgrading accessibility standards for all social housing, so they're more congruent with the National Housing Strategy. As to the affordability mix, we strongly support the proposed income mix of twenty percent deep subsidy, fifty percent rent geared to income, and thirty percent affordable market. And think that also the performance mix for nonprofit housing is terrific in this project. We are aware of concern from current tenants regarding the redevelopment, and we understand that Brightside has taken appropriate steps to address housing needs of current tenants with the ability to move back to the new facility at current housing rates. In closing, the senior advisory committee strongly supports the proposed redevelopment as it not only increases the number of units for very low and low-income seniors, but it also addresses the need to address accessibility needs of seniors and people with disabilities. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and you do have a question from councillor Weave. Councillor Weave, go ahead, up to five minutes.
Yeah, from your experience, I really appreciate the comments about the accessibility needs. What do you think the city of Vancouver should strive for for number of units that are accessible and the number of units that meet universal design?
Well, I think that for all social housing, as we're dealing with right now a quarter of the population, or close to at least a fifth of the population being seniors, and that we should really be dealing with accessibility standards much higher than five percent, which is the current standard in the city of Vancouver. I think that if we're wanting to leverage federal funding as well as provincial funding, I would always try to go for the highest accessibility level available. And so I would try to mirror the city's accessibility standards to be the same as the CMHC Co-Investment Fund. It provides opportunities then for leveraging funding from other sources that really make these types of projects be so worthwhile and meet a much deeper level of accessibility, as well as affordability.
So you think that if we are giving away waivers or giving opportunities to projects like this?
I'm just going to stop you there, councillor Weave. We need to talk about this specific project and save our policy discussion for another time. So if you can loop it back to this specific project, that would be great.
Yeah, so you think that in giving waivers to projects like this, we should tie in the accessibility levels? Because that's important for us as councillors when we're voting on a project like this?
Yes, yeah. Well, I think that I think it's such an exemplary project, and that it really demonstrates how the nonprofit sector is, can really address, better address, particularly for low and very low-income families that's not really addressed by hills in any of the other city programs.
Thank you so much. Appreciate your comments today. Thanks. Thanks, and there's no other councillors with questions for you, Mr. White. Thank you very much for your service to the city and for calling in this evening.
Thank you. Thank you for all your work. Thank you.
Thank you. We're on to Pandora Young.
Good evening, council. Good evening, mayors. My name is Pandora, and I'm here to speak in support of this project. Both of my parents are Brightside residents. They live in twenty-nine twenty-four Venables for the last sixteen years, and they love this neighborhood for the conveniences to shopping and community, and many of their neighbors have become good friends over the years. However, the building is old and with poor design and facilities. So when they learn about the new proposal, they agree to relocate immediately. And this new development will provide more affordable housing units in this neighborhood with better design, community space, and elevator. My parents are now relocated in a newer building, and shout out to excellent job of Brightside staff team, helped them move safely and smoothly during this unprecedented time. And they are very pleased with this new home, better layout. There are elevators, and they don't have to walk outside a building in rain or snow to drop off the garbage daily. It might sound basic, like elevator, community space, but these are very essential and important for the quality of life of senior residents. So in short, I'd just like to thank council and Mr. Mayor for allowing us to have this opportunity to express our appreciation and support for this Brightside project. Thank you.
Thank you so much for calling in this evening. There are no questions from council to you, but I'll say thanks so much for your time this evening, council. The next, sorry, just looking for my list here. The, oh, there it is. Thanks. The next speaker is Tom Armstrong.
Hello, good evening.
Hi there.
Thank you, mayor. Thanks, mayor and council. I'm Tom Armstrong. I'm the CEO of the Co-op Housing Federation of B.C. and the Community Land Trust. Also a resident of Vancouver, so I'd like to begin by acknowledging that I'm speaking to you and living on the traditional and unceded territories of the Musqueam, Squamish, and Tsleil-Waututh First Nations and to thank them for their stewardship of this land. So why am I here toward the end of a very long day? I admit, this redevelopment's not a co-op, and it's not a Community Land Trust project. I'm here because I think this proposal represents the best of what the community housing sector can accomplish when we partner with the city to increase the number of affordable homes in our neighborhoods. And you've already seen this proposal. It ticks all the boxes. It's already funded by B.C. Housing. The new buildings will be more accessible and more energy-efficient. It more than doubles the number of permanently affordable below-market homes on the site. And the proponent, I have to say, is one of our sector's most trusted and capable not-for-profit developers and operators. So solely on its own merits, the proposal deserves our enthusiastic support. But I'm also excited about the proposal because I think it's a sign of what's to come. Much of the non-market housing supply in the city is aging, and it could be redeveloped to provide many more permanently affordable homes. The community housing sector and its non-market housing developers have worked hard to develop their capacity to partner with the city in a shared vision of many more permanently affordable homes. Brightside Community Homes is a shining example of that capacity, and I promise you, there are many, many more to come. So I urge you to support this proposal and the many more you can expect to follow. And since I didn't use my five minutes, I hope you'll also tune in to days two and three of the Virtual Housing Central Conference this week, along with twelve hundred other community housing activists from across B.C. and Canada. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Armstrong, for your comments tonight and all the work you do on this file. I don't have any questions from council for you, but thanks for staying so late to talk to this item. The last speaker on the list I have is Doran Redford.
Well, hello, everyone. I'm Doran Redford, a resident of Vancouver. I'm speaking in support of CD-one rezoning at twenty-nine twenty-four Venables Street. I've been a client of Brightside Community Homes Foundation for the past fourteen years. I moved into my studio suite at Alice Saunders' house in June of two thousand and six. Four or five years previous, I'd lived in a very unfortunate SRO in downtown Vancouver. I can still vividly remember the sense of joy and relief the first time I saw my new home. I lived at Alice Saunders until one year ago, then moved to Glynn Manor as part of the redevelopment program. My new living space is beautiful and modern. I have a storage locker. My rent is even less than before. I feel incredibly fortunate. I support the Alice Saunders Redevelopment Program for all the positive steps it offers. Increased accessible housing for seniors, families, and people with disabilities. Increased secure, affordable, non-market housing when we are in time of such need. Creating beautiful indoor and outdoor spaces to bring people together and encourage a sense of community. Lastly, as a person with mental health challenges, I've found that my home can mirror how I see myself. It is a strong component in self-esteem and motivation. Downtown in an SRO, dirty, infested with mice and bedbugs, there was always an underlying sense of shame and wanting to hide from the world. Living instead in a home that reflects back beauty, safety, security, cleanliness, this makes a person feel valued. And that is what I feel is at the core of the Alice Saunders Redevelopment Program. Thanks so much for listening.
Thank you so much for sharing your story and such a personal touch. I really appreciate it. I don't have any questions from council for you, so we'll say thank you so much for participating this evening. Council, I'm going to make my first call for speakers. If anybody would like to speak to this item, one-eight-three-three-three-five-three-eight-six-one-zero, participant code nineteen-six-six-seven hashtag. That's our first call. Are there anybody else in the chambers or on the line? Clerks for this item.
Mayor Stewart, the clerk here, and no, there are not.
Okay, thanks. I'm going to make a second call now. One-eight-three-three-three-five-three-eight-six-one-zero, participant code nineteen-six-seven hashtag. They get on the list. That number's been tweeted out and is on the livestream. Again, clerks, I'll come back to you. Any change in status?
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk again, and no change in status.
Okay, council, this is going to be a tight one, but I am going to call the third final time for speakers on this. One-eight-three-three-three-five-three- One eight three 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 five three eight six one zero, code nineteen six six seven hashtag. And I'm going to take five minutes. I see that it is nine fifty. I'll come back sharp at nine fifty-five to see if there's anybody else and then if there isn't, I'll close. We'll close the speakers list. Clerks, did you have something?
Mayor, it's councillor Fly. I'm just wondering if it would be appropriate to move a motion to extend and finish this item?
Okay, that might be the safest way to do it if you wanted to do that. I honestly think it would take literally minutes after ten o'clock to do that.
Happy to second.
Okay, thank you, councillor Boyle. All in favor, say yay.
Yay.
Opposed, say nay. Thanks, council. Okay, so we'll take five minutes and I'll be back at nine fifty. Thank you.
Buildings that are being proposed that are higher in more opportune areas and council will be seeing that as part of the public hearing process for the session.
Okay, thanks so much. Mr. Mayor, I was prepared to move the motion, but I see councillor Boyle on, so I'll go below her.
Okay, councillor Boyle, questions for staff? And I just wanted to, before you start, councillor Boyle, councillor Weeb, I did rush you a little earlier or just tried to encourage you to ask your questions to staff after speaker. So if you just say, of course, your opportunity is now if you'd like to ask that question, councillor Boyle, please go ahead.
Thanks, mayor. I actually had just added my name to move the motion, so maybe councillor Dejanovski wants to second it.
Okay, I, okay, actually, I see councillor Kirby Young on the...
No problem. Happy to support it later. It doesn't matter at all who moves it.
Okay, I just, I just want to know if people have questions. So councillor Boyle, you don't have questions. Councillor Dejanovski, you don't have questions. Councillor Kirby Young, do you have questions for staff?
No, no, I thought it was going to be moved. I'm waiting to speak to it.
Okay, so I just needed, I needed to clear the queue.
I move it.
Councillor Dejanovski's moved it. Councillor Boyle has seconded it.
Whatever. I seconded it.
Okay, thanks. So now we're on the speaker's queue. If somebody would like to speak to this, please put your, councillor Boyle, go ahead. Councillor Kirby Young, after that. Go ahead, councillor Boyle.
Thanks. And as may have been evident, just really supportive of seeing this go forward. We clearly need more non-market housing and more affordable seniors housing and I think as Mark White from the seniors committee spoke to really well, the need for accessible housing units is huge across the city. We hear that really clearly. It's certainly a need that will grow as our population continues to age and need that we've been, that we've seen coming for a while. So I appreciate all of the needs that this housing will fill and again, hope that as we take a bigger picture policy approach to trying to find ways to support more non-market housing in every neighborhood across the city, that we look at all of the ways in which we can speed up these processes for non-market housing providers and also look at ways that we might be able to add more units where projects are already happening so that we can be able to have more affordable, more non-market, more accessible, more seniors housing all across the city. We know we need it and I am very happy to see it going forward in the form of this particular project. So thank you to Brightside for the work that they're doing on this, the portfolio that they're taking and look forward to more of it.
Thanks very much, councillor Kirby Young.
Hi, thank you. Yeah, I'll try to be brief in the hour. I mean, I could list all the great specifics of this project, you know, the hundred forty-five affordable units for seniors, persons with disabilities, families, the fact that it's passive health, that they're retaining trees, they are thoughtful in design and building community with the courtyard or, you know, the deep level of affordability. But what I really want to say is just to acknowledge this particular provider because we've had several projects come forward on this council term now from Brightside Homes and I am continually impressed with what they deliver in their projects. It's thoughtful to both any existing tenants who are always well looked after, but in terms of the design and really trying to build that sense of deep affordability and community and it is impressive to see what the sector can accomplish. And I think that the nonprofit sector is demonstrating to us time and time again that they are really well poised to be able to deliver the deepest levels of affordability in really badly needed housing for the most vulnerable in our population. And I don't think there's anything that's much more important than taking care of our seniors and there's always sort of something new where I feel the bar is raised, in this case with the sort of the five percent accessibility. But I'd like to see the city enabling these projects as expeditiously and as efficiently as we can because I think that the community housing sector is demonstrating time and time again that they are best poised to deliver these projects more than the city is. And I think the best role that we can play is to enable that. I just want to thank them. I appreciate B.C. Housing's support to deepen the affordability, but I think that this particular project really checks all the boxes. I'm continually impressed and I just want to tip my hat to Brightside Homes for coming forward. Thank you.
Thanks, councillor Carr. Up to five.
Yeah, I think we're all going to be singing from the same song sheet on this one. I must admit that it does give me a lot of joy to be able to vote for this project. And the reason that it gives me joy is obviously because it achieves a level of affordability that is deeper than any other project proposals that I've seen and that actually is what is needed within this city to supply the housing at the income levels of the people who live here. We just need a lot more of this kind of housing, but I am so happy and grateful to Brightside for their vision, their plans around how they develop housing, the way they take care of residents when there is a development and move people from allocation into other homes that they have. We've heard people speak to us who have been in that situation. They are so thrilled to be able to be in the housing that they are within Brightside. So I just, I'm just overall grateful for this project and as I say, really, it's quite a privilege to be able to vote for it.
Thanks, councillor Domano.
Thanks, mayor. And similar to my colleagues, thrilled to see this proposal coming before council and particularly Brightside has a fantastic track record and is really seen as a partner of choice, but also have been really creative around deepening affordability within their housing. And also, I think to councillor Kirby Young's point, really reflects the strength of the nonprofit sector. And this morning, this was the kickoff today of the B.C. and PHA's Housing Central Conference and the keynote speaker this morning, Dan Pilota, was speaking about how maybe we need to stop looking at the nonprofit sector as sort of the Band-Aid to housing solutions, but really recognizing the strength and that it's not about filling a gap that government can't fill, it's actually that they play a key role in delivering this critical housing and they do it well and it doesn't always have to be government doing that and being the enabler. And so I think that, you know, we need to recognize the real quality and strengths that our nonprofit sector brings and obviously Brightside is one of those agencies and so thrilled that this is coming forward and that we'll be having more housing options within the community.
Thanks so much, councillor Swanson.
Yeah, I started off wishing that the city would give Brightside another piece of land so that the current tenants could stay there and could build a completely new building without displacing anyone, but that didn't happen and the folks I know that live there have moved and are happy in their new place. And I like the affordability of this new place. That's good. So I'm, I'm in. That's it.
Thanks. Just stick myself on the list as the last speaker. I think councillor Swanson's speech was the best one for me tonight, so I'm happy that councillor Swanson's on this because I knew there was some difficulties at the beginning of the project and really want to thank the proponent and applicant for really making adjustments and really listening to the folks that had concerns at the beginning of this process. Really want to take my hat off to the staff as well. Really just tonight, it's been showing on these five projects that things are moving through the, through, through our administration smoothly despite all the COVID difficulties. So just wanted to say thank you so much to the planning teams for doing these projects that are making a real impact in the city. And of course, the clerks for guiding us through this process this evening. So with that, council, I will call a vote on this, this item. Thanks so much, council. That is unanimous. I can just have the clerks pull that up on the screen. And great, that's up there. Okay, so council, we need a motion to recess. We'll be back on...
Motion to recess.
Thanks, we'll be back on councillor Hardwick. Thanks, we'll be back on December tenth, I believe, is clerks' six P.M. on December tenth to finish the two remaining items. And we need a second or further motion?
Second. Councillor Domano.
Thank you. Clerks, am I forgetting anything or are we just recessing?
That is correct, your mayor, Stuart, and recessing until December tenth at six P.M. is also correct.
Great, thanks. All in favor, say yay.
Yay.
Opposed, nay. Great, okay, we're recessed. Thank you very much, council, and we'll see you tomorrow. Good night, everybody. Hi, everybody. Happy birthday, Mike.
Happy birthday.